Didn't it call the meeting to order? I was called a meeting to order. Um, stand or recite the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you at the beginning of this meeting with eager anticipation of all that you are going to do. We know that you have a great power of might capable of accomplishing far more than we could ever ask or imagine. We pray for open hearts and minds to receive your plans and purposes. May we be sensitive to your leading and obedient to your will. We pray that you would open our eyes to see your hand at work in every aspect of this meeting. Pause for a few minutes for your own seconds for your own intentions. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve the agenda of any discussion to that motion. Any non-alaws in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, right, uh, right now we're gonna go to do something a little bit different. We're gonna, gonna go to a planning board interview. Uh, most of them are gonna be at eleven o'clock. Uh, just, uh, uh, Ms. uh, Ferris is here. Uh, she couldn't make eleven o'clock work, so we, we asked if she could come in at nine o'clock, so. Uh, Ms. Ferris, if you'd like to sit up here and make sure the mic is on and introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in being on the planning board.
Below it, just below it. It used to be bright, bright.
Ah, okay. Well, good morning, um, commissioners and anyone else that's here. I didn't realize this was going to be a public interview, so. Interestingly enough, and you asked Commissioner Daring why I'm interested in the planning board. And when I submitted my application, if anyone has had the time to really review it, um, I have over thirty-plus years in federal government experience. And that has ranged everything from USDA Farmer's Home Administration to the Forest Service. I also have certification in community and economic development as well. And watching what has been happening here within our county since I've retired in 2019, um, we're moving and we're shaken. And I think that it's important that the citizens on these boards not only have a background as far as community development and planning, some policy experience, but also to understand the area itself. And I feel that I have the understanding of the area because here in Mead County, we're a great mix of not only agricultural, but we have that, um, I don't wanna call it urban, but larger areas. And we've seen so many changes occur in regard to different folks moving into the area, um, as well as, as the ones that have been born and raised here and want things to stay the same. However, change is evident, as we all know. Um, but once again, I think you need folks with the background that can make solid decisions. And I feel like I am a candidate for making those solid decisions because of the thirty-plus years that I have, um, as well as having common sense. And, um, that's it in a nutshell, really.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Is there any questions from the commission?
Ms. Ferris, uh, thanks for your interest. Um, uh, do you know when the planning meets?
I believe it meets the first Monday of every month.
Yeah, it's the first Monday starting at one.
Yeah.
And, um, but one of the things we do is we, here at Varian's is where we acquire two-thirds of the entire board, not just the board president. So it's important to have people there. Do you have any conflicts that prevent you from being there, first Mondays, one to five, or even maybe sometimes?
No, there wouldn't be any conflicts. I'm, I'm a planner at heart, so if I know that something's going on, I make sure that I'm available.
Well, it's good if you plan for the proper things, sometimes planning for those other things.
Yeah.
Rough. So have you, uh, you said you worked with, uh, US Department of Ag? Which department were you in then?
I was in Farmer's Home Administration when I started out, and then we became Rural Development. Um, and I worked there, and then I also went on with the Forest Service, which is under the US Department of Agriculture.
Sure, and then you've been, it looks like in South Dakota and Wyoming and sometime in Arizona.
South Dakota, Wyoming, Arizona, uh, North Dakota, yeah.
How long you been back here in Mead County?
Uh, well, I retired in 2019 from up in North Dakota in the Bakken 'cause I was the district ranger over the Bakken oil field on the, um, Little Missouri grasslands. I had managed over 500,000 acres, um, in oil leases and pipelining, so.
Retired and moved south?
I retired. Actually, I've been here, technically, I've been here since 2006, um, but retired in 2019, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I see that, uh, about, um, the Pleasant, in the Pleasant Valley area.
Yes, yes.
Really, there's a lot going on in this.
There is a lot going on, yeah.
But not as much as was going on up at the Bakken.
No, and I was fortunate, per se. Um, I came in after the boom. The boom was up in 2012, right around 2012, and I was up there in 2016. So it, I'm not gonna say it quieted down, but, um, I wasn't there for all of the road construction and the housing construction that occurred, even though that continued on for the entire time that I spent up there. So, yeah, it's an exciting place to be, that's for sure.
I visited a couple of times and decided to keep moving. So you are familiar with, um, planning. I, I can't call them zoning laws since we don't have zoning. It's been turned down repeatedly. But we do have planning regulations, and I'm sure coming from the government, federal side, you're very used to, um, some of their rules. Um, any rules you found particularly difficult to enforce or that you thought were too restrictive?
I wouldn't say difficult to enforce or too restrictive. And as we know, policies and regulations are interpreted by the individual. So many times it takes a group to come to the consensus of the actual meaning. Um, I don't, I never had any issues with the regulations and policies that I needed to enforce.
Okay, and so then did you deal, um, at all with any of those big housing subdivisions up there in North Dakota?
Not on the Forest Service, no. But, um, while I was in Arizona as the Water Environmental Program Director for USDA, we had housing divisions that were going in in various locations, um, around Globe, Arizona, and I believe it was Superior. Um, so we dealt with those types of regulations and making certain that the utilities were in place and properly constructed as well.
That, that's good to know because that's a very, uh, large concern here.
Um, have you, have you had a chance to look through our ordinances or have you, uh, not? Obviously, without being involved with it, it's tough to, to sit down and read your ordinances, and I understand that, so.
I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to sit down and, and look through the ordinances. Um, I do go through on a regular basis and see what permits have been applied for, um, those types of things. And I've picked up on some patterns of when, um, there's more of the permitting requests and then when it slacks off. And, um, I have found that it's, it's interesting to me that, uh, the request, it seems to be fairly well-balanced across the board with housing, agriculture, and commercial. Uh, not so much commercial, per se, but I've noticed that there seems to be an upswing, um, trend in more commercial being applied for.
Yeah, we'd like even more.
It would be great, wouldn't it?
It really helps the tax base.
Any other questions for Ms. Ferris? Thank you, Ms. Ferris, for your time. Is there any questions for us?
No, I look forward to hearing back. I know that you have other interviews later this morning, and, uh, I'll wait to hear back from Tanya. And I would take, like to take the time and congratulate Commissioner Seaman on his upcoming retirement. Um, you're gonna love it, I will tell you that. And, um, as they say, you think you're busy now, wait until you retire. But congratulations, and thank you so much for your service through the years. Greatly appreciated. Okay.
I almost wore black today.
Aw. Well, thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Goodbye. Thanks.
Hey, let's move down the agenda, um, brings us to Human Resources, PTO announcement and PTO policies, which we've been discussing the last couple meetings. Uh, Ms. Brandred, please come forward, please.
I thought she died. Oh, here we are, okay, sorry. Meet, uh, Deborah Brandred, Mead County Human Resource Director. Uh, I've just kinda come back today to reiterate the considerations that were shared by myself um, from the HR, representing HR, um, from last week. Uh, that first one was to leave option one, that is in the PTO announcement hole as it was originally written, uh, for the 240 hours to be used as the employee chooses and also to extend the time to 36 months. And so I'm staying with that, uh, consideration. And then also for the employees that are new hires, up to six years, uh, we, I spoke last week about the maximum of at least eighty hours for them to carry over for up to twelve months. When I was calculating the number of people and their hours, um, there was not that many out of sixty-five people that had over two hundred hours or over, even over a hundred hours. It was less than fifty percent out of sixty. There may be some consideration in there to leave it whole, um, but I'm gonna put that out there as well. Uh, the next item I have is for the short-term disability. As you know, I came back with an updated proposal after speaking with, um, RISD Benefits because the proposal we had, uh, was not going to be honored by MetLife because they had not had a new census sent to them with wages that had been increased since October of 2022. So we've had some wage increases when we had our wage and our classification compensation, um, program in September, October. So therefore, the proposal that came back is a little over eight thousand dollars more than the current proposal that was, uh, being shared with you earlier. Now, regardless of retiring, oh, the total is, um, twenty-three thousand, six seventy-four versus the previous total of fifteen thousand, five fifty-nine.
And, and that's just because of our wages, wage increase and the number of employees?
So generally, um, was, when we asked for this proposal back this year, they should've done an update on the census, but didn't. They just said, no, we'll honor it for another year, the same proposal.
You know, I got thinking about that census the other night. Uh, they did not include, um, the commissioners, for instance, in that, did they, or?
I wanna say yes, I think so. Anybody currently on insurance or has, um, is able to take out insurance would be included on that census.
But I mean, we would be ineligible.
Okay.
I mean.
I would assume that we would be.
Yeah, I, well, I, I would think, um, also people on planning or weed or?
No, planning is not on there.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
But commission is, and I believe the elected officials, um.
Well, I can see elected, I, I can see the other elected officials, but I mean.
I can double-check on that, Darin, but I wanna say yes, like, uh, commissioners were included.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we wouldn't amount to much salary anyway, so.
Um, so what I wanted to say about the short-term disability, I advocate the short-term disability regardless of the sick leave vacation because I have seen a need at times for employees that are looking for a supplement when they need time off and they may not have the, any other income that they can rely on. Maybe they don't even have the hours, uh, in sick leave. Um, you know, maybe they just have thirty or forty hours but need more time than that, regardless of how long they have been here. So I've been an advocate, I think this is my third year, of saying that it would do well for Mead County to offer this and have it as an option for an employee should they need it. Um, so I think from my considerations last week, I'm gonna continue to stand on them and as behalf of, uh, HR, that we need these. And what you came out with the first time, I think in that option one was very good, very helpful. It, it allowed some flexibility, um, in retiring the sick leave plan. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions on the short-term policy.
Yes.
Um, we, we found out, uh, last meeting that that is a taxed benefit, um, not a non-tax benefit.
Correct, and so the reason that we were quoted it was not taxable uh, was because they had given us two policies. One was for, we were gonna have a policy that the employee could purchase themselves. That one would not be taxable. However, um, the insurance was quite expensive, so we looked at a group plan. The group plan, if anybody, uh, sends in claims or goes on short-term disability, the money they would receive is taxable. And then I think quarterly, we would receive a letter that would state these wages need to be added to their W-2. So both things would take place, yes. On the same note, I want to say that when I've had people come in and ask for any assistance, no one has said, will I be taxed? You know, they're really just looking for some income that will help support them while they're trying to get well or heal or, yeah.
And, uh, in, unlike, or like, like it is today, if, if somebody does take sick time out of their sick time that they're currently taking, they still have to pay their medical benefits, so whatever their portion that the county's not picking up, they have to pay that. That would be the same case with this as well, um, except it's more guaranteed.
Yes, they would actually probably have the income to keep their benefits in place where now if someone is out for a period of time on FMLA and there's no pay with that, it can be rough for stretching those benefit payments.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good question.
And so I wanna make it perfectly clear, the reason why it would be taxable income is because the county is paying for the policy and the employee is not paying for the policy.
Correct, it's a group policy paid by the.
Right.
By the county.
But I wanted the employees to know. That was very clear.
Okay.
And, and when you did look at that, the employee, if an employee was to purchase the policy versus the county policy, it's much more expensive for the employees to do that.
Right, um, in a month, it's like over a hundred bucks. For the age categories that we have here, the tier would be primarily for most people, it'd be over a hundred dollars a month out of their pocket to have this plan. Hopefully, they would never have to use, but, you know, it gives them an option. And I think Mead County, um, providing this for them is a good, good program.
Any other questions from the commission for Ms. Brandred before I open this up? Hearing none, allow people from the public or staff to come forward. I'm gonna limit the discussion, uh, from the public, uh, and staff for, to fifteen minutes like I did last time. Uh, first time we, we listened, I still have a lot of notes. If there's somebody like to come forward with some ideas, suggestions, or comments? Not seeing anyone come forward, so, uh, I'll offer it one more time if anyone'd like to come forward. I, if, if you'd, if you'd come forward, could you please speak in the mic? That's, we need to have that for, if there's anybody listening. So, anyone wanna come forward? Bakken's starting.
Ken Clubber, Ed State's Attorney's Office. I think the question was, what's up there is still reflecting twenty-four-month period of time, and it just hasn't been changed to the thirty-six, is that correct? Deborah?
Proposal is thirty-six, that's the, that's the original proposal.
And I think that was their, their question back there, is the twenty-four.
Certainly, yeah, we haven't changed anything from, uh, we're. Yeah, everything, all these ideas that have come forward were still proposals and, and, and we, we are, us probably gonna make some changes to what you're seeing here, obviously.
And that's what I think their question was, so if it's something different, please come forward.
Yeah.
Hey, does anybody else wanna speak to this? Not, I'm going to, I'm going to close public testimony on this. Is, is, uh, any questions, comments from the commission?
Yes, I, I'll, I'll start. Um, I do like the proposal of, of pushing, uh, the zero-to-six years, um, having the ability to carry their time forward. Um, I don't know if it's a full carry, and I don't know what the right balance is, whether it's, you know, a hundred and twenty hours, um, or twenty hours per year of service or, um, how we do that. But I, I do like that opportunity to, to allow the zero-to-six-year employees to carry forward. Um, I think modifying the, the length of time, I'm fine with. I, uh, I don't really have an issue with changing the twenty-four, four months to thirty-six months if that's the, the designation we go with. Um, and kinda kicking off the conversation, I suppose.
Do you wanna comment on the short-term disability?
Um. I'll save that, I mean, uh, I'm, that one's an interesting one. I, I do have a fear that the insurance company might keep jacking that number up, but, um, I think it's based on our pay increases in the number of staff that we have and not necessarily a policy usage increase adjustment at this time, 'cause we don't have the policy. But, um, that's, that's one, one issue I, I think I have with that. Um, there's two sides to that one. One side is, uh, it allows for the employees to have some security after their two weeks, um, if they have an issue. Um, the flip side is that it's, it's maybe a, a lower wage, um, than, than I was originally thinking, which is still a benefit if you don't have the benefit. So, um, you might still be able to carry your insurance, still be able to pay that, that family side cost. Um, so, I'm torn on that one.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
Sure, um, you know, I, I'm, I've told a couple of you in conversations that I'm not a big fan of short-term disability for various reasons. Um, uh, I would agree probably, Rich, is that that's gonna increase every year because it's gonna be based on salary and number of employees. because it's going to be based on salary and number of employees, and then, then they'll base on history also, once we start having a history. So, like any insurance, the more you use it, the worse your history, and the rate's going to change. That's, that's just the way insurance works, I, I'm, that's not me being negative, but that's, they have to do that. Um, uh, it seems to me that the complaint that we are getting on some of this changeover was, availability to take hours for, like, the disability wouldn't allow time for family members or sickness related to family members, which causes some consternation, which I could understand. There is also, and listening to Deborah, one of the advocacy for allowing that carryover is they're actually going to be accruing more time that's freely usable how they see fit. Um, I personally like a PTO approach from the standpoint, you know, I, I've always found it, prior jobs I've had, I've always found it frustrating when I take vacation time, and somebody just calls in sick to take vacation time. Uh, that's not something I do, but I'm, it happens, and frankly, I think it happens here. I'm pretty sure it happens here, um, and you kind of get to this situation of whether you call people out on it, make them justify it, or you start firing people that are doing that. The PTO kind of takes that off the table, you, you got your time, you take your time, and nobody's, you know, nobody's bothered by the fact they took vacation time the day before Thanksgiving, and you just called in sick, even though all you did was stay home and get ready your house for the relatives. Um, so I, I like the PTO, um, I appreciate Deborah's discussion on modifications. Um, I, I've got some thoughts on timing. Um, it would seem to me that if you carried that sick leave a little bit longer, that they would clearly have enough PTO time built up to match what they had before. So maybe through, you know, kind of lean into it maybe longer than three years. But the other thing I think you do is, is, uh, got to have some reduction in the available sick leave that you carry over every year as your PTO grows, because it's all about making sure they have enough time to use. So, what I don't really want to get to is a situation where in the last year, somebody feels they got to start using sick, finding, finding ways to use sick leave, because they've got a bunch of it. Um, but frankly, if I push that time out, I'm probably not going to support a short-term disability, because I'm allowing time for that to build up. Um, the short-term disability, to me, you know, once you're paying taxes on it, it only comes in at sixty percent. I'm not sure it provides, like I said, I've got, I've got my, I've never quite frankly liked short-term disability as a policy, um, for various reasons, um, that are probably personal to me, but, uh, so, um, I, I think we need to move forward, I think we got to get this, close the door on this, get this transition in place. But I'd probably do some other modifications.
Any other questions, comments, commission?
Um, yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I think the more I look at the PTO policy, I, I, the more I like it. Um, I, I would also agree with Commissioner Wazorik, that, uh, I think there's some more modifications we need to make before we're ready to take action on this. Ready today.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't say that.
No, I said that, I know you didn't, but I said I agree with you that there is some more modifications. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, I'm ready. I think you guys are, all the staff is ready to, to put this behind us as well. But, uh, we will, um, take a look at it, and, and, uh, again, we've been, I appreciate the emails, appreciate the calls. I've been, been taking a lot of notes and trying to listen to everything we get, so.
Well, I, I'm kind of inclined to take action today.
Okay, that's, I can't stop that.
I, I, I think, I, look, I think a lot of the, the concern out of this stuff grows because people don't know what to expect. Um, in every transition, transition in all forms of life, are always tough, because there's always that uncertainty of how it's going to work. Um, but, you know, sometimes you just got to move forward. I think Deborah's worked up a pretty good plan from it. Um, so, uh, um, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to.
Are you, are you ready to do that now, Mr. Wazorik, or would you prefer to do it later in the meeting?
Um, well, Ray told me if I do anything, I'm supposed to talk slowly, so she can get it all down.
Oh, is it, and please don't take, tell the end of the meeting to, to get this out.
Um, well, we've got all day, so.
Um, certainly do.
Um, so.
I would just soon think about it throughout the day. That's just me. But it's, we've been talking about this one way or the other, on and off, for, informally, probably for years. We have a new commissioner coming on. I'd just soon make a decision while we still have one that's been involved with us through thick and thin. But I'm not sure what the answer to everything is.
Okay, what's the desire of the commission? They want to, uh, Commissioner Wazorik, do you have a motion in mind, or just prefer to, to move on down the meeting?
I had a motion in mind, um. Deborah, as I look at the PTO policy that you've proposed, that's freestanding. Um, you're not recommending modifications to that PTO policy as proposed. You're talking about Lisa Marslow?
Could you come forward, Deborah, please?
Yes, so the policy, the paid time off policy, um, section three point three, including the length of service, these hours and the accrual was most recently compared with what I had sent to Lisa, I think Lisa forwarded to you. Um, because the new statistics were put out, private sector and government, that we were offering a larger accrual than the private sector, but we were one day short of the federal government sector. So we feel very strong that these are correct, these are good for Mead County employees. We did take out the paragraph on the back page that talked about the forty-hour carryover, because it no longer was applicable, because you can accrue up to two hundred and forty. That was the easiest way for an employee to understand what their maximum accrual could be in it, or maximum they can have in PTO. Those were the only changes that she had offered up two weeks ago, or last week, when, when we put it out. So those are the only changes to policy.
As I understand from council, uh, the, the outside council on these labor questions that we looked at, um, is why the people from unions saying they needed thirty days' notice. Our union contract does not require thirty days, only requires a seven-day notice provision.
Correct, that's according to Lisa. We have sent two notifications to the union. Um, we sent a first one early December, and I sent a second one last week, as we were continuing the process, so that they were aware that we were still in making decisions. So yes, two notifications were sent.
Um.
I did put some temporary dates on the announcement plan. Uh, one of the reasons, um, Dawn and I were chatting, and, and Ria, about the time that would help us to wrap our arms around and, and make some changes to the way we would have to do this in Tyler. It also gave the employees, you know, uh, two, three, four weeks to understand what day this would be effective. Uh, we put it, set it, so we felt the payroll period would be the last one in January. I think it's December, or January twentieth through February second. And then the, the payout, if someone chooses option three, that cash payout, or even a portion cash payout in group in option two, that would happen on that paycheck. So they would know when it was coming out. It also wouldn't affect any of their payroll for 2024, if they had any tax implications or anything like that. It gave them some time, um, to think about those. Uh, and maybe just to make some adjustments, you know, of how they're using their time and, and making plans for this year.
Um, well, so here's what I'm going to do, uh, at this point. Um, I'm going to make a motion to adopt a PTO plan effective the last, oh, it'll be, so, let me make sure I've got this right. It'll, it'll be, it'll begin to accrue is what you decided the last, on, in January? Or that's the la, and the last payment in January would be under the old plan?
Uh, the options would be paid out?
I'm not talking about the options, I'm talking about the-
The accrual itself?
No, I'm talking about the switch to PTO.
Okay.
So does a switch to PTO occur, would your recommendation be that that occur at the, the, the first payroll, after the last payroll in January? That's when you change your accrual methods?
Yes, so it's, mm-hmm, so what we would have, I think we were looking at not doing it on this first pay period. So the first pay period starts Monday, and we do not have the time to do it then.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
So my question, though, is-
On the policy?
On the policy.
Mm-hmm.
So, the, I think, I'm going to make a motion to-
You can adopt the policy without it.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the policy, but I think at the same time, I should make a motion as to the pay period by when it begins, that accrual method changes.
Hmm.
So, I- Right, well, I'm going to do those as a same motion, but I'm going to do that motion unless you see there's a problem with it, so that, that accrual method, which would begin to accrue at the beginning of the third pay period-
Mm-hmm.
-of 2025.
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's a timetable under which it sounds like you can do this and do this changeover. Because I see these as two separate things. Number one, what's the carryover, and what are we going to change? So.
So the reason for the January twentieth begins a pay period, it is always on the twenty-second, when that monthly accrual happens? By making the change, and Ria, you step in if you hear something incorrect.
I was going to ask Ria, there's, we're going to make sure this works for payroll as well.
So by making it on January twentieth, that will be the first PTO accrual?
It will begin to accrue, it will not be on your paycheck then, but they will, it'll begin to accrue on January twentieth.
Yes, in that first, in that pay period of January twentieth.
That, not, not the payment on January, there's not, not a payment on January, but it's when that, that pay period begins.
Yes, that accr, the accrual date for PTO would begin in that pay, first pay period.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt the, uh, PTO plan as proposed, uh, commencing on January twentieth, 2025.
So, and, is that with, um?
It is not, it's, it's, no, no, the, that PTO plan does not, I'm just adopting the plan, and then we're going to deal, as a separate motion, I would deal with the, the, the existing changeover and the, and the carryover from the other one. This is just on the accrual, on the policy going forward, so I want to separate these things. Because if we can't get resolution on the one today, I want a date where the PTO commences, so everybody, we can weaken that transition.
Correct.
So, but, and then, so just to make it clear for everybody.
Did we have the PTO plan come up here, please, so we can hear what the motion is on? It's, sure.
The PTO plan is on, attached.
I understand, I want it on the board, though.
It's the one on, show.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so this is the policy, and my motion, if Ray, if you're looking for it, is to adopt the new proposed policy section three dash three.
Going down to the accruals on the hours?
Effective, uh, beginning, effective on January twentieth.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second on the floor, uh, to, uh, to adopt the PTO policy as proposed, which is right in front of you on the board, uh, effective January twentieth, 2025.
And again, I'm just going to reiterate, I, what I'm doing is, we're going to, we're adopting this policy, how we treat accrued, we still need to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, still willing to try to get that done today, but-
Essentially, these numbers right here is what you're-
Yeah, well, yeah, this policy, because, you know, let's get it keyed up, because we're going to have to do stuff with payroll, we're going to have to start figuring some of this stuff out, we're going to have to start putting stuff in place.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can't get-
This is the only thing the motion is on right now, is, is right here.
On this policy section three dash three, which does not address accrued time at this point.
So in essence, you're, you are breaking this revision up probably into three different motions.
I don't know if it's-
I, I mean, probably disability and the options would be.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm adopting the policy now.
Right, right.
But what we do, everything else.
Any other discussion to this motion?
Can I confirm the motion, please?
Certainly.
Motion to adopt PTO policy as proposed and make it effective the beginning of January twentieth, twenty, beginning the pay period, beginning on January?
Effective January twentieth, 2025.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, reference that it's a proposed, uh, policy section three dash three, so we have a-
And, uh, any issues that payroll would be concerned with that? Any other discussion to this motion?
Who's, who first?
Talbot was, Commissioner Wazorik was, was made the motion, Commissioner Creed seconded it.
Okay, so I have a question, Ken. That motion would be sufficient to change this policy to this, correct?
Substitution to the policy manual?
Yes.
And your motion is sufficient, yes?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing else that would have to be included to change the policy.
For the, for the change of this, no.
Any other discussion to this motion?
Like to tie.
Any other discussion to this motion? Hearing none, uh, let's, let's go by roll call on this, I'll start over here. Commissioner Liggett?
Aye.
Mr. Seaman?
Aye.
Mr. Wazorik?
Aye.
Commissioner Creed?
Aye.
Uh, chair also votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else the commission wishes to work on, on this, at this time? Uh, if I'm, you're getting some notes out, Commissioner Wazorik, or are you ready to move on?
Um, well, kidding, no, I've got some notes here. Um. All right, Ray, you ready?
Rest assured, we have audio.
Yeah, well, that doesn't mean, you understand why I-
Does it mean some of us speak in the mic either?
Yeah, it doesn't mean that I, uh, said it correctly in the first place, so. Um, so in looking at these, um, the, uh, if somebody would elect options under the payout, that's going to be paid on the payroll of, the first payroll in February of 2025, would you understand?
It is that same pay period, one-twenty through two-oh-two.
Right, it's the starting of the one-twenty.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Um, I'd make a motion to all employees as part of the changeover from, of course, carry over all their vacation time. Combat, but as to sick time, allow the three options carrying over a maximum of two hundred and forty hours. Uh, if you've been here for six years, or a, electing a full payout of your sick leave at minimum wage at eleven fifty an hour, or one half of your sick leave. Three options.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that though anybody that carries over sick leave will expire it totally at the end of four years. But, um, the cap for carryover every year will reduce by sixty hours. So that at the end of the first year, the most they can carry forward would be a hundred and eighty. Second year, the most they can carry forward. Um, and that for. All right, I'll lean in a little harder.
(laugh)
That, uh, uh, for employees less than six years, that they can carry over their sick leave up to, you know, whatever sick leave they have, up to a hundred and sixty hours. Um, with it reducing, for four years, reducing forty hours every year. Or if you're, it'll be just gone. That people under the six years have no payout option. Yeah, all right, Ray.
It does note in the front that there's no payout for zero to six years as well, okay.
Uh, that's what it also says under option two, are, are you changing that in your motion?
Oh, under option two, I said that they could, they could pay half, but it, everybody's entitled to a four-year payout.
That's right.
So Talbot, your motion is, um, to extend this to four years and then a sixty-hour reduction at the end of every year.
For the people over six?
People over six, and then, um, people under six would be a hundred and sixty-hour carryover with a forty-hour reduction, uh, at the end of the year.
Um, but.
And no payout, and no payout. The current options.
So, um, for this.
Someone needed to second it before we can discuss.
Before this motion.
We need a second before we can discuss it.
I'll, I'll second for discussion.
Yeah, this motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, um, I don't know when, when we wanna deal with this, but this is gonna determine how I'm gonna vote. But on the option one, carry over a maximum of two hundred and forty hours, uh, to be used for sick leave for twenty-four months, uh, we've gone to forty-eight months. But that carryover, since we're going to PTO, is that gonna be strictly PTO then? Or are we gonna still try to say, oh, it's only sick leave, so you can only use it if you're sick?
It's only sick leave.
Okay, 'cause I, I'm not in support of that.
Well, they get to carry over their vacation and that becomes PTO. So this doesn't.
So what you're referring to, Commissioner Wazork, is the sick time stays sick time.
The sick time stays sick time.
Is basically what you're saying, correct?
Yes, and the reason I'm phasing is because one of the issues is they're actually gonna be getting more time as the.
In PTO.
So that allows them to build that up, and so nobody gets caught short during that transition.
Okay, if I could just restate your motion so we're clear, um, and correct it and, and, and possibly help Ray out here. Uh, Commissioner Wazork made a motion to allow all employees to carry over all of their vacation hours.
Correct.
Uh, and the, the employees with six or more years of employment, uh, to carry over a maximum of two hundred and forty, uh, no, excuse me, to take two hundred and forty hours of either option, to take that as a payout at minimum wage.
It's one state, they can take over the sick leave they want, they have, maxed at the two forty.
Okay, they can take up to.
We're not giving them extra sick leave, they're just transitioning.
They can carry over, there's two things they carry over in the payout are two separate issues, so yeah, that, they can carry over a maximum of two hundred and forty hours of sick leave, uh, which would expire at the end of four years?
No.
Well, there's three different options.
Yeah, that, yes, but the, the two forty doesn't expire, it, it, it is, it diminishes every year.
But all of it expires at the end of the.
Yeah, it's only, yeah, at the end of fourth year.
Um, two forty expires at the end of the four, uh, it will reduce every year by sixty hours. Uh, that's option.
Yeah, so Gary, I'm gonna be slightly technical.
I'm sure, I, I want you to, because I wanna get this motion right.
Because it doesn't reduce by sixty hours, their carryover reduces. So somebody could, if they carry over two forty, they could use forty hours of that during a year, 'cause they're out sick for the week. But then, and then they get to the end of the year, they, it only reduces, yeah, it doesn't reduce at all because, well, yeah, it only reduces to twenty hours because.
Whether they use sixty hours in a year or they don't, sixty hours will come off of that sick leave.
No, the cap will reduce, that you, the carryover cap will reduce.
The two forty will reduce by sixty, regardless of using how many they used.
Yeah, 'cause it starts out, carryover maximum of two forty, the maximum will be reduced by sixty hours.
Yes, uh-huh.
And, and Ted, in the first motion that we approved, there's two hundred and forty hours carryover in addition to this.
No.
No.
No, it's only vacation that gets carried to PTO.
Yeah.
Only vacation.
Yes, but we have down here maximum accrual of two hundred and forty hours.
That's what they can earn up to in their PTO.
Right, right.
So, you know, basically, we're telling the employees, if you've got two hundred and forty-six hour sick leave hours, if you don't lose, use at least forty a year, you're gonna lose it. So we're basically encouraging them to be sick for.
Well, it doesn't, but the, the, it, it, I, I could look at it that way, or you could look at it as they have, they'll, they have two hundred and forty hours at the end of.
Yeah, but I mean, who's gonna, who's gonna manage that if they say?
Okay, let's.
How you gonna manage that if they're?
Let's get through this motion first, so we can make sure it's clear in the minutes, because this is something that we're gonna have to make sure we're clear on, and, and everyone's intent is, is, the intent of the motion, I wanna make sure we, we have. So, uh, the two hundred and forty hours, uh, can be carried over, a maximum of two hundred and forty hours, can we, are you getting this, Ray? You're getting it, somebody, is somebody getting this, and, 'cause I'm gonna have you guys repeat this, because this is gonna be important. So maximum two hundred and forty hours can be carried over. Uh, they can be paid out at a minimum wage, that'd be one option, correct, Commissioner Wazork?
With the deadline date.
With the deadline date.
That is shown here.
That is shown on the board.
They don't have four years to act on that.
Certainly, yeah, certainly.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
That is the option, they, they, yeah. Anything carried over beyond that point is carryover.
Okay.
The way I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Uh, the option two is that they could be, they could carry over half of that, which is a hundred and.
Talking to your mic.
And read and talk. Um, and that would be, they could use that hundred and twenty hours, a maximum of four years, is, I assume that is correct as well, Commissioner Wazork? And the option two?
Yeah, so like if you, if you take the option two, the way I would envision it, is your max carryover is still the two forty number, so that hundred and twenty number, even if they don't take any, doesn't reduce, you know.
Yes, so is that still subject to the sixty a year then, would be my next question for you?
Only, yeah, yeah, no, it's, a hundred and twenty doesn't kick in until the, until the third year, that's the new cap. Because otherwise, I think it becomes, everybody gets their own cap, it becomes a nightmare.
Okay, that's, that's fine, um. And that's, yeah, subject to four, they can use it within four years, and that's, we'll basically lose sixty a year from that. Or they can just, uh, um, do the two forty and then the four years, we discussed that. Uh, the employees that have not been here six consecutive years, uh, they can, uh, carry over a hundred and sixty hours to be used within four years. And this will reduce forty hours per year. Did I say that right, wrong?
Right.
The, the, the maximum carryover cap will reduce, I think.
Can I go back to option two, I just wanna be clear? So if an employee chooses that, they are paid out one hundred and twenty hours by this January?
At minimum wage.
At minimum wage, eleven fifty. The other one hundred and twenty hours, they can use any time or only at the end of the third year? Because it's only a hundred and twenty hours.
I think they could use it anytime, it's sick time.
Anytime, right, okay, all right.
And all sick carry hours, carryover hours are to be used for only sick. And I think there's something in policy is that, that if it's on three days or something, that, that they have to have a doctor's notice. Is that motion clear for everybody? Any other discussion questions on that motion?
Uh, yes. Not on the motion, on, um, the effect, um. Could you tell us again at one point, and maybe you'll have to get this information and get back to us, but at one point, you, um, disclosed to us the number of people who had excessive, excess sick leave? And the number of people who had very little?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, would you mind sharing that data with us again?
Okay.
Okay.
So I think, uh.
Starting with each subgroup with the number of who have been here less than six years?
So out of the, I'll start just the zero to six years.
Okay.
There are eighteen out of sixty-five employees with a hundred-plus hours, or at least at a hundred hours.
Okay.
I'm sorry, a hundred-plus hours, but not up to two hundred.
Okay.
And then there are six, six employees that have over two hundred hours. So out of sixty-five employees, twenty-four of them are at over one hundred hours. Everybody else is under one hundred.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Yes, because that's just one section. Um, how many people have forty or less hours out of that other forty?
About twenty-eight are below forty.
Hmm.
And a lot of those are brand new, so they haven't even started their accrual yet.
Right, okay.
They'll get a December accrual on the twenty-second.
Six-plus years.
Six-plus years?
Yes, how many have more than two hundred and forty hours?
So twenty-nine of the forty-six have at least two forty. Twenty-nine of the forty-six.
How many of the sixteen that remain then have less than a hundred?
Ten, and, and not, not a lot, I mean, not a lot below a hundred, but.
Okay, so out of the total workforce number you have there, you have a total there. Our, our total workforce number is, how many employees?
Full-time employees, how many full-time?
Full-time.
Uh, sixty-five and forty-six.
Yeah, okay, that, okay.
According to what we're currently counting in our accrual.
So, out of a hundred and eleven full-time employees, we have thirty-five people who have two hundred or more hours.
Yes.
And of the others, um, almost more than, let's see, fourteen, forty-four have, um, well, I didn't ask you on the six plus if any had less than forty hours, so I guess I'm gonna have to ask you if I'm gonna make that conclusion.
Less than forty, uh. Four people. Regular users, I mean, they're actively using their sick accrual, yep, so four.
Okay, so the, the irony of that kind of is, is we have thirty-five employees who have more than two hundred hours, and we have thirty-two people who have less than forty out of our full-time employees of a hundred and eleven.
Anybody though, arena that just joined this year will have less than forty.
Right, I understand that, but we're making, we made up for that with our expanded PTO, they're going to automatically have.
A higher accrual.
A higher, and, and more sick leave than they currently have.
Yes, than they currently have, yes.
And the PTO policy that we adopted is better than the majority of the for-profit businesses and one day less than the feds.
One day less and the feds for, except for the new hire, the new hire in the federal has three days more. But we have one day more than private sector.
And feds have no payout.
Oh, not that I could see.
Yes.
I, I don't wanna say no.
Well, I check.
Okay. (laugh)
Okay, any more discussion?
Does it payout always on PTO?
Irrelevant to.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, all right.
We've already passed the PTO policy. Um, any more discussion on this motion, which is in regards to our carryover of the sick leave?
Mr. Chair, if I might, your explanation started with, the vacation is already carrying over as part of this motion, I don't think it's necessary, and I think it's combining apples and oranges, so.
I understand, but it doesn't hurt to have it in there as well.
Well.
Vacation carries over regardless.
It, it might, um, just in, in terms of, the motion is subject to lawsuit, so if the suit is over sick, then let's not drag vacation into it as well.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, so would you like to take vacation out of the motion, Commissioner Wazork?
Well, no, now that, all of a sudden, I'm gonna get sued.
I haven't seen the motion.
That's so, let's, uh.
While the motion has been made, we're, I know.
Um, how about if, I'll make the following suggestion. Um, why don't, why don't I just amend the motion to allow vacation time to be taken over, turned into PTO, end it there? And then I'm trying to write up this motion so both Deborah and Ken can look at it and provide me insight on it prior to submitting it, and I'll submit the, the motion for sick leave and the vacation time maybe later today.
Okay, so you've rescinded your sick leave motion, and then you're just, uh, the, the motion now stands, uh, uh, I guess, yeah, let's not, is that okay with the guy with the second?
Yes, I'm fine with.
Okay, so the motion, keep what you have, don't erase what you had on the sick leave stuff, but now we have a motion on the table that all vacation time is carried over and turned into PTO time. Motion by Commissioner Wazork and seconded by Commissioner Leggett, is that, that's correct?
Effective January twentieth.
Effective January twentieth. Any discussion to that motion?
Um.
Rich seconded it.
I did second.
He did. I said any discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I, I, I would like to know exactly how many. I, I, I would like to know exactly how many hours and types of things we're talking about, and is it a carryover indefinitely, or is it gonna be a carryover year after year after year?
I think vacation, we don't have a choice. Vacation turns into PTO regardless.
Regardless.
The, the motion is kind of unnecessary, but, uh...
Well, it just makes it clear that your vacation becomes PTO.
Yes.
PTO is subject to a cap, just like vacation's subject to a cap.
Yes, we're only talking about the vacation time.
We're, we're capped at the two forty, but still, I wanna make it clear that with that motion, it is not saying somebody already has, say, three hundred and twenty hours.
They can't.
They can't.
Two forty.
Because it's subject to, it's subject to a cap on vacation already.
Yeah, because it's going into the PTO.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I guess to be clear, the way I would understand it, it would be going is turned into PTO. The max PTO that they can have is two hundred and forty.
So vacation transitions to PTO.
If they come in with two hundred and forty, they can't get any more than that, because it'll, on January twentieth, it'll turn into that PTO, along with our PTO policy, and that's the max accrual. So that'll be it, two forty.
And this also gives them a chance to use a few hours if they're already at two forty, which some are.
Yeah.
So, but, motion and second on the floor, uh, dealing simply with the vacation time, it's not dealing with anything but vacation time. Is there any more discussion or question on this motion? Uh, if we could have a, I'm gonna call for electronics. Hearing non, I'll call for an electronic vote.
Got Ray going through baptismal fire over there.
I think motion that all, all vacation, all employees will have all their vacation time carried over. Effective, it's all effective, uh, uh, turned into, effective January twentieth. The great Commissioner Wazorek.
Yeah, I would just say motion that all vacations be converted into PTO. Effective on January.
I have the motion as, motion that all employees will have vacation ti, that all employees' vacation time is converted into PTO time effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I can get rid of the time in there maybe.
Boy, vacation time.
Any accidents today while we're waiting for those motions? Is it safe outside? It's safe.
Okay, is that clear, Commissioner Wazorek? It's up on the board now, I believe.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, motion that all employees' vacation time is converted into PTO time effective January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We've already had discussion on that, uh... Uh, do you, uh...
That one. I vote yes.
A second here.
Outfit?
Voted, sorry.
Motion carries by unanimous vote. Um, is there anything else, uh, that we'd like to bring forward? Is there anything else Commissioner like to take action on? Commissioner Wazorek, you mentioned something about a possible motion to, to, would you like to have HR and Legal run through it first before you give it, or, you're on a roll, ma'am.
Um, I was talking to Legal and I think maybe give Legal and, um, France had a chance to kind of, uh, make sure the language, that Legal had a suggestion that might work to, to clean it up, where it would be just dropping in part of the announcement with edits.
Okay, so we'll continue discussion on this. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to bring forward as far as action goes on, on any subjects on the agenda? We've talked about everything else, I guess short-term disability is also.
All right, for routine business at this point.
But I thought you'd say, thank you, Commissioner Wazorek. Anybody else have anything they wanna bring forward?
Not at this time.
Uh, let's move into routine business. Is there anybody you'd like to, uh, anybody here from the public wish comment? Anybody have any public comment? Say anon, I'm a closed public comment. Registered Ds, do we have anything from Registered Ds? Treasurer, Mr. Schreick.
Not a lot of people got married in twenty twenty-four.
There we go. Good morning, Mead County Treasurer, Robin Schreick. I submitted my KPI report, which is on the screen right now. If you have any questions on that. While you're reviewing, I will go through what's been happening in the Treasurer's Office. Last week, we did put the delinquent list in the faith paper of who had outstanding mobile home taxes and also real estate taxes. The total amount for mobile homes that are still outstanding is fifty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. That was from the list. That has changed, of course, because we have had a few people come in and, um, pay. For the real estate, we are looking at eight hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred ten dollars and forty-two cents. Just for your information on that. Also...
How much of that is more than one year, do you know?
That is just the one year on...
Just the one year.
I did not advertise previous years.
Do you know how much is on the books from the prior years?
I do not.
Approximately?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I would be guessing that, so, yes. But just to let you know, I did hear that Pennington County did have a tax sale yesterday.
Oh, they did?
They did. Unbeknownst to me, so they must have.
Are they gonna deal with that if...
I have not talked to Annette lately, so I'll have to ask about that.
Oh, and I, I think we gotta make sure that, that eight hundred and forty-nine, that is not just what's owed to the county. That is what it, you are collecting for all the entities.
Entities, yes, whether it's a road district, school district.
All the hundred.
Yes.
Right.
That is correct. Already? Also, we're working on six oh five drive. That's our new motor V system. We are getting the equipment set to go on that and doing training on it. On a lighter note, just wanted to let you know that the Treasurer's Office has been doing a jeans day. Every Wednesday this year, we wear jeans and we put a dollar in a bucket. For the month of December, we went ahead and did every day as a jeans day. And we have raised throughout this year three hundred and seventy-five dollars that we're gonna be giving to the Kiwanis Food Bank. So kudos to the ladies down in the Treasurer's Office. Also, another pat on the back are out to Grace Lutheran Church Knitting Group. They helped us with our drive downstairs with the socks, gloves, and hats, and they donated a lot of hats for the school that will be taking over to the school nurse for the elementary students to use if in need. So stop by and look at their handiwork on that. So wanna send a kudos out to the Grace Lutheran knitting ladies. And then also, we had a secret Santa that came in with a box of stuff, just dropped it and walked off. We didn't get a name or anything like that, so, pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Are, are you prepared to jump down to item F one on the agenda if we just, uh, approval upon stipulation?
Okay, yeah. Was Ken gonna be involved in this? And he stepped out for the moment.
Well, one, you can go get him, I mean. We don't have to figure this out.
If you could grab him, we'll get this, uh, taken care, since you're here, I just thought we should.
Yeah, thank you.
I told somebody you had a Toys for Tots tree down there, too.
Oh, that's why they came down and were looking at the corner tree with the four H.
Was it Matt?
Well, the four H, um, kids have been doing a contest for ornaments. So they're going over there and they're saying, hey, we just have a first name on this and there's no description on what kind of toy they want. And I said, well, this is because it's an ornament competition. They thought it was a Toys for Tots, so, yeah, we clarified that, but...
I, I will contact them.
Not a problem.
On Hunt, the board stipulated, um, to an adjusted or an equalized value, adjusted equalized value, um, for the Hunt properties, uh, this is a payment under protest of the second half of taxes. Uh, they did it properly, paid under protest, and properly sued the Treasurer in the right period of time. Um, this is a stipulation to end that lawsuit against, the current lawsuit against the Treasurer by payment of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and six cents back to the company. That amount is spread across all taxing entities.
Would you explain for people who might be listening when, when you say they sued the Treasurer? We have, we, we have, we have heard those comments, you know, in the past during certain periods of time. Can you explain why they have to sue the Treasurer? It's not because she sent them the wrong bill?
Without getting in the weeds too much, they contested the value of their property as assessed. Uh, we agreed that the assessed value needed to be changed. A person has two ways to get money back on their taxes. One is through an abatement process, which is a very limited number of reasons. Uh, the other is to pay under protest, to pay your taxes under protest, and then sue the Treasurer. Now, that has a very short period of time, but it's for any number of reasons. Uh, they followed that process correctly, um, and they are entitled to the difference that we have agreed upon. And this is just authorizing the Treasurer to sign that stipulation so it can be filed and the matter be settled.
Because most of us will never be sued unless we're in the public office.
Hopefully.
Any other questions, comments, and/or action on this?
I'll make a motion to authorize Mead County Treasurer, uh, to execute stipulation for the second half of twenty-three, pay twenty-four taxes due to lawsuit settlement.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor to approve any discussion to this motion. Hearing non, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Thanks, Ken, for coming. If that concludes Treasurer's...
Already. In conclusion, Ted, congratulations and hope you enjoy your retirement. And I'm gonna miss our road trips. We did a lot of windshield time together for a county meeting, so good luck. And if you ever wanna jump aboard again, just let us know and we'll get you in the car and we'll take you down to a county officials meeting.
Okay, thanks, Robin.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
You too. Did you guys go to Pine Ridge Friday?
We, that brings us to E on, we do have a scheduled hearing. Uh, it's not necessary, but since we scheduled it, we, we still have to have it. Um, uh, it's a budget, budget supplement hearing, and it's not needed. Uh, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? O's public testimony on this, uh, again, there's no necess, it's not necessary. We, we don't have a shortfall within the budget. Uh, we just called for one. There was. Don't think we need any action. Uh, let's move down to, uh, planning's not here. Uh, Sheriff West, do you have skip item H, H one?
Good morning. Sheriff Pat West, Mead County. Uh, don't have a whole lot to add. I just wanted to, uh, share a few stats with you uh, since we're at the end of the year, um, kind of, eleven months. Um, just wanna, uh, share a little bit of the, uh, revenue that has come in from the good work from the employees of Mead County. As far as, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, just supplement revenue that's come in from grants and as well as, um, contracts, uh, for the sheriff's office, we have, uh, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, also coming in, uh, was some hail damage that wasn't repaired. Uh, we had nine, or eight vehicles, nine vehicles that were damaged. We fixed five of them. Uh, four of them we salvaged, so that amount, uh, coming back into the, to the, uh, general fund was sixty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-six and some change. Um, also on the surplus sales was twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ten, and civil fees of, uh, ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents, for a total of three hundred and five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That's on the sheriff's side. The jail side, um, out of county billing, twenty-four seven inmate phone commission, things like that, ended up being around five hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. Uh, for a total of, both combined of about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents, give or take a few, uh, amounts in, in the change. Um, again, a successful year. Uh, things, things were busy. Uh, as usual, our calls for service is about, almost six thousand more calls for service this year, uh, that were dispatched through the, the dispatch center, so they've been extremely busy there as well. Um, I wanted to answer your question, uh, Ms. Creed, reference, um,
Oh, commissary.
So basically, what we're, where we're sitting with commissary right now is around twenty thousand. Um, according to Captain Dale, we like to maintain that at about five thousand if we can. Uh, we have purchased some inmate, uh, new, um, uh, beds, mats for the inmates. We are looking at purchasing, um, some new, um, cellular, uh, radios for inside the jail, 'cause the radios that we have are extremely old. Um, we would like to, uh, use some of that money to purchase those cell, uh, radios, which have been tested across the state and other jails are starting to use those. That amount would be around, uh, fifteen thousand and some change. So we'd like to utilize some of that commission money due to the fact that that is, you know, inmate money coming in rather than taxpayer money, we can put it to use back into the jail. So that would be the plan for that, but, um, right now, it's right around that twenty thousand mark, so...
Are those cell radios gonna be different than the new radios that you just bought so that you can finally have radio, a decent radio between the courthouse and the L... a decent radio between the courthouse and the L C? Because, you know, in the past, it's really faulty.
It's been, it's been really sketchy. Um, working with Tony and I T, we got to put in a few more routers to make sure that we have, uh, cell service through that, but that is going to make it so there's no voids at all. Uh, those are, those are extremely, uh, nice, necessary for officer safety, but they're relatively inexpensive. Um, I, I believe they're around three or four hundred dollars plus the monthly rate, which is way different than these portables of almost six grand apiece. So hopefully, we're going to graduate to that on the deputy's side as well, but we still have locations in the county where cell service is available and radios don't, and then vice versa. So we have that issue. Um, just wanted to share, uh, some of those numbers, um, and again, you know, just say how much our employees at the sheriff's office, the jail dispatcher, knocking it out of the park, so...
Um, you want to move down to the contract?
Oh, yes, thank you. So if you want to bring that up, um, go down to the amount. So initially, the, right there, initially, the, uh, Sturgis ambulance contract for inmate medical services with the jail. Uh, again, last, last week I talked to you about, they came with a contract of around a hundred and fifty thousand to cover that. Uh, went back to the table, uh, and had some discussions with them. Uh, they agreed to one hundred and thirty-five thousand for the year. And then on top of that, um, we need to make sure that we have, uh, blood draw techs available twenty-four seven. So we're hoping to go into a contract with them to do that as a twenty-four hour service with a lump payment of around twenty-seven thousand. So the total for the contract would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, that would, uh, again, allow us to have access to twenty-four seven service for those, um, blood draws. Currently, right now, our blood draw budget is around thirty-five. Um, but basically, what we would do is use our ambulance contract and that blood draw line item of twenty-seven thousand and combine them.
So we budgeted total for the ambulance contract and the blood draw, we budgeted a hundred and seventy, is that what you're saying?
Uh, it would be close to that, yes, yes.
And this would, we...
So basically, the, the, the agreement on this would be, if you guys approve, it would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand. If you're good with that, I'll go to the city, make sure they're okay with that.
So you're saying this is coming under a budget, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, correct.
I, I want you to be sure and keep track of the number of blood draws. You know, I got to thinking, um, after Ken was surprised he didn't realize we'd gone from fifty to sixty dollars on the draws to, uh, the private providers, but one reason we did that was we required them to have a contract and also have all the liability insurance and everything, and that was to help, uh, them cover their costs as a private contractor. Um, since the city already has all that insurance and everything, um, I probably would have given them fifty bucks a, a draw, but whatever it is, should work out. But be sure and have J J keep numbers so we know if that's an accurate price.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
And I'm, the only time I'm concerned about their ability is during the rally, but they are so daft during that time. We should be okay.
Yes.
So is the daily cost, uh, to house a prisoner maintained about the same or with wage increases and everything? Or are you going to be looking at a, a raise to, to charge other counties that are bringing prisoners?
Uh, we, we have had that discussion. Uh, Captain Dale and I have talked about that. We, we haven't made a decision on whether or not we're going to increase that. A lot of that fluctuates due to the fact of, uh, how many inmates you have in the jail. So it's hard to calculate how much per inmate it is. Uh, currently, we're running around, uh, high fifties in the population. Um, and it goes up to, you know, pushing the eighty mark. So a lot of that depends, um, per inmate, fluctuates on how much it actually costs.
You know, I noticed, you know, when I look for claims of payment, it looks like, you know, we have to spend a lot of money on food. Has, with inflation and we've seen in the grocery stores, has that food cost gone up quite a bit in the jail's budget? Or I was just curious, you know, what...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, and we're trying to order in bulk to save money, but it has definitely gone up quite a bit. Um, tremendously, actually. I, you know, percentage wise, I'm not sure, but, uh, definitely costs more to, um, you know, feed the inmates and, and, and take care of them, obviously.
Well, I believe it's, it's time that we go over the jail costs, um, and that we also have a commissioner involved in that and come up and see where we're at on a, because we can come up with a average daily inmate cost. And right now, we're still running a little shy of what some of the other jails are, which is fine.
Right.
Which is fine.
Any other questions, comments, or interaction on this contract? I recommend approval of the Sturgis ambulance jail contract for twenty-five. Now, just, uh, sorry to interrupt you. So this hasn't been approved by the City of Sturgis?
No, this was submitted by the city, um, and we were looking to agree with it and then get it back to them.
Sure, okay.
So we'd be starting in January. Currently, right now, we're just paying per blood draw, so...
So I do have a motion here on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second on the floor to approve this contract. Any discussion to that motion?
Um, county and city officials met in unison to go over the contract, so I believe that, and, and we did agree on these parameters.
Yes.
Any other discussion to this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff West. Have a merry Christmas. Uh, brings us down to planning, Madam G. Or brings back up, back up to planning.
Oh, you're just fine. Morning, Tiny Avig, Planning Director. This is the, um, received this map from Larry Dean, South Dakota D O T. Um, this is as a result of a twenty-twenty census count. The U S Census Bureau has determined City of Sturgis census urban boundary area. Um, the federal highway allows the urban boundary to adjust to transportation purposes per the two thousand and fourteen federal highway guidelines for establishment, submission, and approval of the urban area. Um, the new area for twenty-two, twenty-four is the gray, uh, which is up, up by Avalanche. Every gray area is the new boundary.
Purple.
The purple is city limit boundaries. And the red was the two thousand and thirteen federal highway urban boundary area. So we kind of...
They de-annexing?
No, nothing to do with de-annexation today. Um, the boundary is...
But I'm just saying that boundary is...
Is, so I know, um, Larry Dean has worked with the City of Sturgis. This was on their city council meeting last night for approval. They worked with the area up by Avalanche as an addition to the boundary map that was provided a couple of weeks ago. And one that was south, down by Fort Meadway. Um, those are the two areas that they had added to the boundary map. Um, it's used for, it provides the number of miles of public roads within the urban or rural areas. Um, after the classification and approval of this boundary, um, boundary area, which will be approved by D O T, Mead County Commissioners, City of Sturgis, and the federal highway, the D O T will start working with Troy Eastman and myself on reclassification of roads within those urban areas. Um, it's just used as a planning tool is all it's used for, and then with the reclassification is where you can start applying for the grants, which is reclassify your roads, your arterial and your urban roads. I'm just asking if you've...
Do any of you recall ever seeing one of these for Sturgis before?
I don't remember the, that would have been in thirteen, um, when the last one was done.
Thirteen, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I...
Because the census count's always every, is there.
And I, I wasn't on in thirteen, believe it.
They only count every ten years, and this last time they did housing units instead of population.
I, I know Larry's been working on it across the, the state and, um, I'm glad to start seeing him come through, so helps some conversation. Uh, questions, comments on this, uh, or action we need to prove it?
Shouldn't this help us in getting grants?
Um, it'll help the city as well, yeah.
When I say us, I mean...
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the F H W A boundary, urban boundary.
Second.
And a motion and second on the floor to approve this, this boundary. Uh, any discussion to that motion? If they do annex that part, does this impact?
The part above the...
Well, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, Sturgis is talking about de-annexing some of the area that that's now in the urban boundary. Does that...
The, the purple area sitting right above, is that Woodland Drive? Is that what it's called?
Well, I don't know. I mean, they're, they're allowing them to develop it, but, uh, without it.
They're talking about de-annexation. Um, been looking at that and they're looking for an annexation. The Sturgis is looking for an annexation if that even, some of it even happened to be even in the City of Sturgis right now.
I guess my only question is, does this impact us at all if they change their boundary?
Are you saying the city is questioning if they went through, I see the look on your face. Are you saying they're questioning?
I'm questioning.
Properly annex the property overlooking the football field?
Portions of it, yes. There's a resolution to de-annex that portion, and part of the legal description is not recorded at the registered deeds as being annexed into the City of Sturgis.
Plus, the resolution had other issues.
And the resolution also had other issues, yes. So I don't know if there's...
It had typographical errors when one part said it was de-annexing, the other part just said it was annexing. Hey, the motion on the, motion on the floor, the motion on the floor is to approve this. I assume the question was...
The only question was whether this makes any difference.
So that could affect the vote on that, but now we're starting to get into areas that...
Right.
So I, I could not answer that.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll vote for it and they can keep it.
Any other discussion to this motion? Or clarification, tell, but I think, uh, there are areas that are not annexed within the city limits that are included in the boundary, so I think it'd be okay. Any other discussion to this mo, motion, which is a motion to approve this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 O, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, let's take a short, maybe ten minute break. Uh, we can, uh, probably get into auditor stuff. Ow, thank you.
A little extra time.
Yeah.[133.01]
Laws and stuff like that, and so I've been reviewing Title XI of South Dakota Codified Law, as well as Ordinance Number 20, and discovered this is a very interesting time to be a part of the growing nexus of Meade County. I believe Meade County is on its way for upward progression and trajectory for much population growth, as Colorado Springs was 25 years ago, in between Colorado Springs and Denver. I could just see it coming, and I want to be a part of a process that I can hopefully make a contribution to for all my other citizens who live here in the Meade County area. As a citizen with no business interests or any type of real estate perspective or anything else, I can pretty much give a very objective opinion on what I'm interpreting, because I have no special interests whatsoever, other than doing a good job for my fellow citizens.
Mr. Pauling, is there any questions for Mr. Pauling?
Sir Talbot, I'm the, uh, in fact, I didn't even put my name tag out today. That's probably for the best. Um, the, uh, um, we meet the first Monday of each month from noon to five, or sometimes even a little later. Do you understand that you're student teacher? Do you have the control over your calendar that you those, that you can make those meetings?
One of the joys of being a substitute teacher for Meade School District is I can accept or reject any job I want at any time, up to an hour before report time. So all I would do is just go onto the computer, block out those mandated meeting times, so I would not be asked to do any jobs. If it's possible, they're really, really shorthanded. I'll just do like I'm doing now. I'll go over to the school for as long as possible, and then come over here. Meade School District is very, very good with working with people who obviously are coming in to substitute to help out the school employees and the students. So there will be no conflicts, because I have no other need for any type of employment or obligations during that timeframe, sir.
Okay, so how good are you at talking slower?
I can talk.
Okay. Well, I just, and you were in here earlier, where I was catching the flack for talking a little fast, right?
My apologies. I sometimes speak a little fast when I want to make sure I get all my points across, if I know I'm on a time limit.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Uh, um, it's, uh, uh, planning, sometimes it helps to talk fast, sometimes slow and methodical is better, believe me. Um, uh, yeah, so the meets in this, uh, uh, this room, um, have you, you said you must have lived in Colorado Springs for a bit?
Uh, my wife's last posting was down there at Peterson Air Force Base. Um, I was already retired and being basically a stay-home parent. So I remember Colorado Springs back in the late eighties, early nineties, when I was at the University of Wyoming ROTC program, going down there for some military exercises and all the open terrain. But you drive down I-25 now, you drive down Castle Road area, it's nothing but subdivisions and gas stations.
Yep, over miles and miles and miles.
Yes, sir. Wasn't like that always.
Yeah, and you understand, I mean, we have to let people subdivide their property. Our purpose is to make sure they do in a way that benefits the community rather than the county's plight.
Which is always the struggle point between individual rights and need for the greater good. I think that hopefully, as a citizen, a voting member, an American, I can make a prudent and reasonable decision. You're never going to make everybody happy, but you should do the best you can to do the best you can to follow the letter of the law, as well as the precedents that have already been set.
Thank you.
His speech didn't bother me. I thought I was listening to my son. He's an Army officer, too. And I continually say, "Slow down." It does me no good, no good at all. What prompted you to be a student teacher?
Well, when I came back from Afghanistan, um, the Army wanted to say, "Hey, Major Pauling, you did a good job. You want to go to Iraq?" And it was in 2005. And I was eligible for retirement, because I started out enlisted. I enlisted in the Army Reserves and went up to Sergeant and ended ROTC here at Wyoming. Um, and we had kids. And when the kids became of an age where they could go to school, my wife was like, "Hey, you need to find a job where you can be working when the kids are in school. So why don't you go work for the schools?" So substitute teaching was a good fit, because my wife's military career was still climbing up the ladder. And we realized that if we spent more time working and then giving away our money to childcare and everything else, there was really no point. So how would I be able to work and still keep a little money in my pocket? Hence, substitute teaching came about. So I've been substituting here for Meade School District for about six years now. And since I get a lot of jobs, I like to think they like me.
Hmm, okay. So how many years have you been retired?
From the Army, I enlisted in 1986. I retired in 2006. I retired at the age of 38, because I went into the reserves and I stayed reserve. Uh, my commissioning group here in the group 1991 was when they were doing the great big RIF reduction in force. They'd taken two out of three company-grade officers and given them pink slips, so I just stayed in reserve forces and rode it out.
Got a question for Mr. Pauling. Um, so the interesting part about Meade County is we don't have a zoning, uh, we don't have zoning in the county. Um, so some of the issues that come up through planning, um, are, I would say, a zoning issue that we don't really have the authority to modify. So, um, kind of knowing some of those things, and I don't know if you've had any time with, with ordinances, um, and kind of in that general idea, there's, it's an interesting dynamic, and I know that the, the general public, um, it comes up in the commission a lot when people have issues, um, that we don't have zoning. Um, but it was voted down a number of times by a large number, so letting you know.
I'm looking forward to that challenge, sir. I mean, the bottom line is, is that this is a great place to grow family, grow old, and look back at memories. I hang out at the America Legion Post down in Piedmont quite a lot, and I hear all the stories of all the generations and of all the fun stuff. And do you remember when that was like that and that was like that? And all this other stuff. It's the unknown country, sir, and that's why I'm very interested in being a part of it, because I can hopefully help define it for the greater good.
Any questions for Mr. Pauling? Right. Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Pauling?
Just thank you for the opportunity to apply, and hopefully I'll be sitting on that side of the table next time you see me.
Well, thank you for, for applying and, and coming in today and, and get back to school. Merry Christmas.
Goodbye. Thanks.
Uh, Shawna, would you be ready next? You're here next.
So Shawna, I think we have to put under oath, so she has to tell the truth.
Well, will she even do that then? Is the question I would have. What good would that do?
I want to, I want to know if she still has the ordinance memorized line by line.
Thank you, Mishmeh. First of all, thank you for your time that you have spent on the planning board, and thanks for applying again. If you'd like to give us a brief introduction yourself and...
Okay.
If you guys could, just a second, Shawna, I'll stop your time.
You, you won't need your clock for me.
Well, we, some of us get a little windy. One time Talbot's mic is picking up.
So I'm Shawna Schmidt. I was born and raised in, um, Sturgis, South Dakota. I've lived here my entire life. I work at the Fort Meade VA Hospital, and I've worked there for more than 20 years. Um, I am the administrative officer for the engineering department. And, uh, I've been on the planning board for four years, and, um, I've learned a lot. Um, there's been a lot of good things, there's been a few challenges. But, uh, I think, uh, I enjoy working with the board members. I enjoy working with the public. And, uh, I would, I think I would like the opportunity to continue to, um, work on the board. Gives me an opportunity to serve my community. And, um, I enjoy the, trying to forecast the issues, um, both good and bad, um, and the opportunity to maybe help, um, my community. That's just about it for me.
I assume that the time still works for you?
Yeah.
No conflicts?
Yep, yep. My, my workplace is very accommodating for me.
Um, what is the biggest challenge that you've had in the four years, uh, on the planning board?
There's been issues where, um, ordinance doesn't really apply for certain situations that maybe I would consider best for the county. Um, and one of those issues are, um, covenants and how, you know, covenants apply versus ordinances. And when people try to do things, um, against covenants, but yet they're in, sitting in this chair, trying to get us to agree. And that's been a challenge. And it's very, very hard, because, because you're trying to, trying to accommodate both sides, um, and also morally make a decision of what you think is right and what you think is best for the county.
Uh, I noticed that Lawrence County just did the same thing, um, where they had a, they were helping with enforcement of covenants in Spearfish Canyon, and now they do not.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, you see, and I remember when you wrote us and, um, you, you know, it goes down to the thing that every group can have, every different subdivision can have their own covenants and their own, um, rules. And really, it's not in our domain I look at to interfere in what had been their rules that they all set up when they all moved in there. Um, and so, yeah, it does make it difficult.
And that's all, that's all good when you have a huge, a huge subdivision that they're all paying fees into, and they've got these pots that they can then hire a lawyer to fight somebody for breaking their rules. But when you have a covet, a small subdivision that has four to, to 10 people, they don't have those funds. And that's what makes, this was, that was the case in this one. It's like, they can't hire their own lawyer to fight this.
You know, the same thing can be said within a city. I live on Paisley. We have covenants that says no parking on the streets. Okay? We have a single lane up the thing. Nobody. It's, it's, it all depends upon which landowner has the, um, is most offensive, I guess, or who can cause others more disturbing. But we all went into it with our eyes open and we all signed the covenants.
Yep.
And we all knew. So since we knew, everybody there knew, kind of like not our fight.
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean-
Which is hard.
It really boils down to what we have the authority to do as the county or-
Right, yep.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, definitely a challenge.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I appreciate your time on, on the board as well.
Um, when you talked about, uh, different things in the ordinances that, in the ordinance that are not being addressed, uh, you want to cite a specific example of something that you have not needed revisited?
Well, just like with the covenants, like before Bill Rich left, there was a lot of conversation about that whole covenants thing. And, and he actually had written up some things that we might be able to add to the covenants that would give us just a little bit of leeway that we might be able to, you know, and so maybe in the next time we rewrite the, the ordinances, there might be things that we can add. There's been other things throughout the, the last year that, um, that possibly might need to be addressed that, that we've come across, um, as a board. Uh, one about adding the size of the covenants and the fire protection thing, Talbot. You know, we, you know, add four more and it bumps the, the development up to need underground fire storage and how that's maybe not addressed as well as it could in the, in the ordinances. So those are things I've kind of kept note of. So next time we, we have to updo the, the ordinances, there might be things that we discuss.
Oh, yeah, it's very maddening when they come in. This is, this is the end of my development, even though I got 200 acres back here.
Well, they just changed the name of the development, so they, so they don't have to apply-
Of course.
The same rules.
Yeah, you know, no offense, that's why they got attorneys.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
He didn't even hear me.
Or Mishmeh.
I love attorneys, but-
Attorneys make more on that side of the table than this side.
Oh, oh, without a doubt, without a doubt.
Are there any questions, comments for Mishmeh?
No, I just, uh, I've appreciated having her on. Um, you know, she and I sometimes don't vote the same way, but, uh, oh, she has a good insight. She knows the, she knows the ordinances. Uh, she cares about how they play in, so.
Any questions for us?
Don't. I appreciate you. All you guys do. I listen to your meetings when I can and-
Oh, you poor kid.
Glad I sit on that side for this, the other board and not, not your guys' board.
Well, thank you again for your time on the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mr.-
Have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Hey, I met your son, too. Yes.
Hopefully he's good.
We gave him a gas mask.
Mr. Charnholm. Mike, thanks. Thank you, too, for serving on, on the planning board and, and your time that you've done that. And I, I appreciate you reapplying. Uh, if you'd want to just introduce yourself to the board here, and, and we'll ask you some questions.
Okay, great. I'll keep you in easy, all right. Um, I'm Mike Charnholm, uh, resident of Meade County for, uh, 48 years now. Almost all my life, not quite like Shawna. I've worked in the construction industry for 30, 30 years. Um, currently been with Skull Construction, a partner, and the vice president of Skull Construction for, uh, 25 years now, been with them. And, uh, been serving with planning, I believe, I believe it's been six years so far. So decided to reapply and continue on, on the board.
Any questions for Mr. Charnholm? Um, so Mike and I'll ask the same question. Uh, in the six years you've been in the planning, uh, what have you seen or what's the biggest challenge that you've had, uh, in that time?
So I think one of the challenges, I, I do feel that planning in the six years that I've been there, that I've seen a lot of good change. And, uh, and, uh, I think they're always continually to get better. Um, one thing that I do see that has been happening, and I think it's not so much a, it might be a little bit of a frustration or something that we can help educate, um, the applicants, is when the applicants bring, uh, plans forward, they're fairly kind of incomplete, especially when they go to a professional design service. And, uh, there's an expectation that we have, and it kind of feels like they bring them incomplete, but they want us to help complete them. And with the county, you only have so much time and only so many resources to do. It takes a lot of, you know, planning board and Tanya and her team and Rhea and everybody's time to help educate, um, educate those develop, developers and educate, um, those. So-
Some are harder to educate than others.
Some are harder, because they're repeat offenders, and they know who they are. And, uh, you know, um, that's something I hope we can help them educate and become better at and serve our time.
I think that's a great point. I know that Tanya's made some adjustments for next year, uh, with the timing, and also whether we accept incomplete, um, packages now as well. So, very, very good point. And I, there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of growth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if Talbot wants to ask his question or-
No, no, it's, uh, it's nice to have the construction technical knowledge on some of the structure issues associated with these plats. Um, it's, um, it, there are times it's been a struggle. Sometimes you think they're just trying to wear you down. So developers are-
It does. I mean, we, we say it's kind of thankless, but sometimes it is rewarding. I think the biggest thing why we're all here is because we care. We care about the community. We care that they're going in the right direction. I think that's what kind of sets, sets people apart who apply or who do do, do this job, is because we care about the citizens and our county and stuff. And we want them to, you know, get better and, and, and grow, you know. And there's nothing dysfunctional whatsoever about planning. I feel it's, it's doing really great and it's made great strides. And we continue to do that and not stay complacent. You know, what we did yesterday should not be good enough for what we do tomorrow. And so we keep on just getting better and better, as I see time goes by.
And, um, the time still works for you as well?
Yes, it does. As long as I don't get sick anymore and, uh, old's been kicking my butt, so.
And I echo Talbot. I appreciate you on the board. Actually, uh, the entire planning board has done a fantastic job, um, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? I agree. I, you, you guys' agendas keep getting bigger and bigger all the time. I don't know if you're going to be able to fit into one meeting a month anymore, but you guys, you guys have to sacrifice a lot of time for that, and I certainly appreciate.
I, I think that, um, no, no disrespect to past planning, but in the last 10, definitely prior to that, uh, calendar and involvement and-
Any other questions? Do you have any questions for us, Mike?
I know it.
Well, thank you for reapplying and thanks for your time on the board, so.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes the interviews. Uh, Mr. Arachford pulled her name today. Uh, we had an interview at nine o'clock, Nancy Veras. I think we probably want to discuss, uh, how we'll move forward, but it'll probably take a little time and discuss that at some point today. Um, so if that's all right with everybody, let's move on down the agenda. Uh, this brings us down to the auditor.
Good morning, Commissioners, Rhea Crane. I have the monthly auditor's report available for you, if you would like to review that or ask me any questions.
Is there any questions on that auditor's report? Uh, if not, I can like keep going. We got some, kind of a bit of lifting to do within the auditors.
I, I do have one question. How are the levies progressing?
I'll let Ray answer that question. Uh, I have the levies all entered.
Ray, if you could, sorry to interrupt. If you could identify yourself, please.
Yes. Ray Blakeman, um, working in the, with the, in the Meade County Auditor's Office. I am, um, the levies are entered all into the ENCODE report. Um, I have one question left with the state that, um, hopefully is done today. And, um, we have a, um, other than that, I believe, we have a question, um, that, for the resolution that, for you guys to approve today. And, or not necessarily question the resolution, that you guys need to do today for the budget. And then, um, just waiting for the phone call from the state to, uh, be able to roll the books over.
Uh, my, my question is, are we going to have the, uh, are we going to be able to get the tax notices in the mail in time for taxes to be paid come January 2nd?
I would believe so. I would need to speak with Robin. Um, part of it, if we roll the books over, the amounts will be available in the treasurer's office, but the tax bills, um-
Well, well, no, I mean, Rob, Robin's the last one on, on, uh, Robin can't do anything until we're sure the auditor's office has completed its work. And my question is, is are, is peer going to be able to certify the, the levies in time for the data to get to the printer, to get rolled over, to get into the mail, and then to the auditor's office, I mean, to the treasurer's office. Treasurer just collects the bill. I want to know if we're going to have all of our work done at the auditor's level in order to make that possible.
If I can address that?
Yes.
I believe that Ray still has a question on the secondary road tax levy. Am I correct? That you're not 100% sure that that is the, the correct number that has been used? With that said, that needs to be determined yet this week. I believe the rolling of the books will not happen yet this week. December 20th was our initial deadline. I do not believe that that deadline will be met. So I believe, um, that there will have to be some time spent next week getting this finalized with the help of ENCODE. And it will be a little bit difficult over the Christmas holiday, because I'm not sure what their office hours are.
I have, have, has anyone been in contact with the mailers, what their availability will be? And, um, gee, we spent all that time on the phone with the Department of Revenue. Um, I thought Wendy said that that secondary road levy was then correct. What, what happened in the meantime?
I'll let Ray explain that. When I entered the levies into the, um, levy prep program, and the only thing I entered was the levy prep and the request amount, when I ran that report for our secondary road levy, it actually came, the valuation of the secondary roads was the, um, one point, or, I want to say 15-
1.5 million. It was the old, the old number.
The old, the original number that we had used.
So we've either, what I can determine is delays on, and I just found out this, this morning, is we either got an entry problem or an ENCODE problem. So we need, we just need to get to the bottom of it. So the number we have today that we passed, essentially passed last week, uh, is the number the state gave us, and that's the number that's correct. Um, we know that number's correct, because that's the number the state gave us. Is that right?
Right.
I'm asking the auditor's office if that's-
I believe the difference is actually that there, there are two road districts that are in the city of Piedmont, which is an unusual situation and causes havoc every year. But I believe that the difference in what ENCODE is saying is correct versus what DOR is saying is correct is the difference of those two road districts being in the city limits of Piedmont.
Okay. But nonetheless, what we passed last week and what is on our agenda to pass today, we're dealing with the correct numbers, though, is my question.
I actually question that. I believe that the number's actually going to be the lower of the two when it's, when it's all figured out.
So then we will, if we pass this today, I guess we've already passed it, because we passed it last week. Um, and we'll just, we'll have to, we'll have to redo that next meeting, or whenever we get the right number.
Correct.
Or have a special meeting over the phone.
I believe that if we can get the numbers certified with Department of Revenue with, with what, they're on board with what the numbers are that we are using, we can proceed and move ahead. I believe that Robin has talked to the printers, which is why December 20th was the date that we had given for deadlines, that she has time yet to get it printed before the first of the year. So at this point, um-
We'll probably have to have a special meeting.
I don't believe you'll have to have a special meeting. I think once we get approval, certification from the state, we can move ahead.
Oh, but the number, we don't have to approve that number, though?
You can just approve that resolution at the next board meeting.
But it won't, but, but the next board meeting after this one is scheduled for January 14th.
Given the circumstance-
So is that, is that enough time to get the resolutions set and get the taxes and the mailers all out, is my question?
I'm going with the notion that we can talk to Department of Revenue, since we're all on board with what's going on. When we get the correct number with DOR, we will, they will certify that. We can move forward with the process. You can just address it at the next board meeting.
Okay. Well, make, and, and converse with Commissioner, Commissioner Ken on that to make sure that is legal. Because I, I, I would question that, I guess. I would almost think that we would have to approve it. Unless he has an answer right now.
Welcome to working with DOR. Um, they don't do the numbers till the end. We've done this in years past, and this, it goes retroactive back, too.
As long as you're aware of the process, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just-
And DOR is fine, that's, that's the biggest one.
As long as everyone's fine with it, I'm fine. Okay. Questions answered? Commissioner Creed?
Um, I believe the commission should be, um, notified if, if indeed, um, we do not make those deadlines and get a progress report as far as, um, how that work is all progressing. Uh, a progress report no later than Thursday to know if we're going to get to the printers. And then again, um, a, a follow-up.
And so, just a procedural question. Do we need to, uh, work on- Do we need to work on, are approved the levy J6 today? Uh, we, essentially, yes, because that's the number we approved last meeting. So it's, it's the number, we, we assign the value essentially, and we assign that value. Therefore, that's how I would assume that we have, so we basically, it should have been on the agenda last time. It should have been approved all along, essentially. I guess we wouldn't have to, but I, much sense to approve it.
Okay.
No, it's a good question. That's, I was, one of the same things. I put some thought to it. Any other questions for the Auditor's Office on the report?
Yeah, I, I guess I would concur with Doreen. I, I think if we're not going to meet that date, I think letting us know that we're not going to meet that date is, is key.
And Thursday, December 19th.
Yes, that's a, yeah, that'd be correct. I, I think an update on the, on Thursday would be, would be great. And then when it actually is rolled and, and we are sent to printers, I think getting that notification would be good as well.
Because it takes an extensive amount of time to roll all that data, doesn't it, as I recall?
I'm afraid how long it will actually take.
And, and I thought sometimes that was rolled during non-office hours.
There are parts of that that I believe have to be, without disrupting the rest of the offices, I believe it does have to be either before or after working hours.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? More questions on the report? Uh, let's move on down to the payroll and overtime. I don't, unless there's questions, uh... Do I have any questions? All right, let's go down to the budget transfers out of contingency. Adam J. Three.
As you can see, I have prepared a resolution 2024-12 for contingency budget transfer 24, 2024-0, number two. And it does, um, to, to ensure that we have the proper funds in each one of these departments to meet our statutory requirements by the, by the end of year, the Auditor's Office is proposing the attached amounts to be transferred to each of these departments. And the total, total transfer would be 326,400 from contingency. And I believe at present, we have 492,500 in the contingency fund.
About 7,000 for, uh, now we had a resolution on that earlier.
Seven, yes, we took 7,500 out for an opioid funding.
Opioid, opioid, yes, thank you. Any questions, comments? Anybody like to, is it about anything in this resolution?
I think overall, we did pretty darn well with our budget because we had that money sitting in contingency, knowing that we would have unanticipated expenses, but we still are going to have a cash carryover and...
Yes, for the sake of you knowing, you will see in your claims that you're going to have the $15,000 check that will be payable to the Mead County Fair Board. So we're moving that money into the 4H and taking it out of 4H and writing a check to the Fair Board. And the CLRP that you see is actually a, that was a surprise to all of us. It's a supplement that is necessary, um, asked for by the state in addition to the amount that we've paid that's actually just slightly over this for the year.
Asked for by the state. You said that very nicely. And I want to add to that Fair Board. I, when Rhea sent email over to 4H, I had her put in there that that $15,000 was specifically, the motion was specifically for the use of the bathrooms, if they still add on. If the, if the project does not go through, they should have to return that money to Mead County. I know you made that motion, but I wanted to be clear just so that it, as it went out there, that it wasn't just used for whatever.
Right.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair?
I assume that was okay with you, Ted. That's, go ahead.
Jenny did confirm that they actually have an account specifically set up just for the bathrooms, and she will be giving us updates.
Okay, wonderful. That's, want to be clear in that, that letter went out, so.
As far as that CLRP bill, it just so happened that I ran into a, an area legislator right after we got that bill. And again, I expressed my dismay that even when we have excessive law enforcement fees concerning particular cases, it seems unfair that we can get no compensation back if that individual declares or pleads guilty. And I cited the Highway Patrol man and the, the death out at Bloxburg that time. I didn't do any good, but I cited it.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this resolution? Questions, comments, interaction?
I'll make a motion to approve the contingency, or the, uh, the...
Resolution.
Resolution 2024-12 for transfers from contingency to the, do you, I need to say all of them, or...
I don't believe so, since it's in the resolution.
Okay. The passing of the resolution.
I will add that it's a transfer of 326,400 from the contingency. There was 492,500 left in our contingency.
Second. We had a motion and second on the floor to pass Resolution 2024-12, which is the contingency transfer into these various budgets. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us down to transfer, transfer from general fund to emergency management. We had a cash transfer, we had to do a cash transfer.
We had to do a cash transfer. The fund itself is not over budget, however, the balance sheet is negative, so we do need to bring the, the balance sheet back into a positive number.
It's the cash account, we just have to make sure that they're over above.
I think this is largely due in part to the fact that we are not collecting the payments that we expected to get because Mr. Henderson is not able to spend the adequate amount of time on the emergency management projects to get the reimbursement, the funding from the state, the grant.
Right, and, and the commission has been aware that the VSO responsibilities are taking the majority of his time.
Questions, comments on this transfer of cash into this, this fund? Or action?
Um, the only other thing is, I think it's, it's been several years since we got that. I can remember when Jerry Dorr was here, we just quit even applying for it because we knew we wouldn't get it.
Questions, comments, interaction?
I'll make a motion to transfer money from general fund to emergency management in the amount of $40,000.
Motion to second on the floor to transfer $40,000 from general fund to the emergency management fund. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us down to J. Five, general fund assignments. State requires us to have less, 40% or less in our, in our general fund budget as far as what we have in the bank, so which we're required to either end it or assign it or come up with a capital project. It was desire, we talked about this at budget time, that desire this board would be to assign some funds. We came up with a few things. We're, we're still not, we, we need to, basically, from what we have in our general fund cash reserve is, is, we'll need to assign a minimum of 13,473,338. Commissioner Liggett, I think you had some ideas. Would you like to show?
Um, so I, I spent quite a little time on this, and I do have a spreadsheet I'll, I'll hand out to everybody. Um, so I went through everybody's, kind of the requests that have...
You did little type.
Well, it got longer.
Do you have an extra?
Yeah.
I do.
Um, so I, I did go through all of the, the requests that we've had over the last year. The 5 million that we, we did assign, or we, we talked about in, in the preliminary, or in the budget process to assign, um, but that left, we had to assign about $8 million more. This is assigned money, it's not, uh, spent money, and I think that's the, that's the key piece of this, is, this is, this is a different process than we've, we've done before. Typically, in, at least in, in my time at the commission, we've budgeted this money. And, and what Gary brought up this year was maybe we should do an assignment at the end of the year. And in doing that, we, we keep a better list and we keep budgets with what the budget actually is for that department. So, um, there's a couple things to put on here. I know that, um, and everybody can see the list, but, uh, the, the roof project at the LEC, um, that's, that's something that we want to do a sign. We are working through engineering side of that one to get estimates and, and a spec for that. The courthouse roof, building control system, some of these were talked about in the budget cycle, and I did add those in here. One thing that was not talked about in budget cycle was removing the secondary. I know Doreen's brought that up, uh, every year that I've been around. So, um, I, I had to assign, sign some funds. The commission for legal and engineering, um, for professional services, I put some money, uh, I made an assignment for that. Now, this is my best guess on the assignments, but, um, it seems like they fit within the department roles and the requests that I've seen over the last few years. Planning, I put in $100,000 for professional services. We have a lot of stuff that I believe that we need to do with, um, you know, engineering reviews, plan reviews. We have a lot of big subdivisions that, that are coming up. The Treasurer's Office, I put in some additional funding. Whether or not we're going to need that, I don't really know. I know that there's some upgrades to the systems, um, some equipment that, that we're looking at purchasing. I think it was budgeted for a big portion of that, but I, I don't know if we covered everything we needed, so. Sheriff, the, this was a, a budget request that we had during our budget cycle. The communications were also budget requests during the, the budget cycle, and I want to make sure that we capture those. The IT portion, the 185,000 for the switches, um, that's really not necessarily a non-negotiable thing. I think that we have to do that, and I'm going to push hard for that. Those switches, the, the core switch that we have, um, had a failure, and Tony was, was able to bring it back online, but it is a very key piece of our equipment that needs to be replaced. With that, there's some trickle-down that has to happen. And in that number, I did forward the number to Gary, but is a backup core switch, which I think is really important as well. Some of these other items under the IT were items that I think Tony and Kevin had identified as 2026 expenditures. This gives us the opportunity to start tracking those and start keeping an eye on those replacement pieces. We can do those earlier, but at least we can start tracking them and, and we get the assignments in there. The highway, uh, one, obviously, the highway is easiest because they, they got big numbers and we can assign a lot of money there, but...
And we can move it around any place we want.
Yeah, so, but in all reality, I think, um, you know, some of these things, like the land, um, land is something that we are working on, and I believe it's on the agenda today for the acquisition. We do have a, a piece of property we're looking at purchasing as well for another shop location. Buildings, ironically, we have a, a couple buildings that, um, are in really bad shape. One of our shops does not have a restroom, uh, does not have a concrete floor, so there's a number of those things that, you know, are in that, in that list. Haynes, the full-depth repair, the engineer's estimate, uh, I believe you said was $3 million. Is that what you said yesterday? And so that $3 million is for two miles of roadway? So, and that's just a, a repair? That's not going to be a, a widening of the road, that's just repairing the road to that, uh, to drivable surface, basically. I did put in another 1.9 million for surfacing repairs. There's a, a big portion, I believe, that they said that, that we could overlay or patch, um, and that would cover a, a large piece of that. New Underwood Road, I know that this is a, a touchy subject for a lot of people. I, we have a substantial area that needs to be repaired next year. So, um, I did put in for asphalt patching. This is not a resurfacing, this is just a, a portion of the patch, so...
Is that the big hole?
Yeah, that's the, in that first six miles, we have a, a pretty bad section of roadway. So we have some options to either go back to a, a gravel surface, um, or to take it to, you know, put some money into the roadway. This is a patch. It's, it's no, it's a Band-Aid, um, so that, that's, and this is an assignment, this doesn't mean that this work is all going to happen.
You know, as long as we have an area legislator here in the room, you should maybe mention, when he stays here for Ted's retirement dinner, we inform you about New Underwood Road and why it should be a state highway.
Love to bend your ear on it. Um, yes, uh, so DOT contracts, this would be, uh, the Elk Creek Road project, uh, the safety grant piece in there. We have a, a 10% cost of that project. It's a 2 million, 2.2 million dollar project. We have, uh, the big grant pieces in there, and a part of that is, um, trying to get some of the, our big grants, we pay 20%, so if it's a million dollar bridge, we have a $200,000 bill. We've approved two big grant applications this year, so if those both come in, uh, we have a substantial cost in there. New Underwood, if that grant, uh, application goes through, that's a $300,000 bill, so that $1 million is potentially enough to cover all those. General maintenance on crack seal, crack and chip seal, those would be all of our asphalt roads that we have. This is just kind of the, the normal, you know, cost of that. I did throw in, uh, the cost of a road grader. We, we had a road grader failure. We had a number of road grader failures this year. We, we sold one, uh, we surplus one and sold it for $80,000. And then, like, two weeks later, we lost an engine in one, and it was $80,000. So, um, we are currently at, I think, seven replaced road graders. So we do have one in the budget that's going to be arriving, I think, in January-ish, if I understand correctly. And if, if we're able to purchase this, another one this upcoming year with an assigned cost, I would maybe look at a 10-year warranty on that rather than the standard seven-year because it does kind of off-cycle our equipment replacement plan.
I wonder if that CAD is still available that's got the nine-year. That was for 32, I think.
Um, a loader, we did try to buy a loader this year. We were unsuccessful. We are currently moving a loader from location to location or renting a loader, so, um, there's some benefit to having that. We've been looking for a semi-tractor for the last, I think, four years I've seen this on the budget. We have not been successful in finding one. But I did add a side dump to this as well because we currently do not have a side dump gravel trailer, um, which would allow us to do, uh, to haul our own riprap and to better utilize it for moving trees. Baco has been on the list for a number of years. It's not a, a critical item for the county, but, um, it is very useful. We do have one Baco, correct? Two Bacos?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, base stabilization and chip seal. This is a, a process that, that, you know, Troy's, Troy's done a fantastic job of, of championing this. Our base stabilization process, uh, we've done some test sections across the county. Elk, or, um, Fort Mead Way was done in, uh, base stabilization, and, um, it seems to be holding up very well. It held up during the rally. It's done a really good job. He also found another, um, uh, application on top of the, the base stabilization, which is a process that the DOT is using to seal the top. And so the chip seal versus auto, auto seal?
Yeah.
Is it a number? Um, is, is an option. And I, I think that what this does is it allows the county to maintain that road without, for about a five-year timeframe, I think is what we're seeing in the Pennington side. Pennington's been doing this. And it, it keeps our blades off the road, so once the road's there, we really don't have a whole lot of work into it. But those high-traffic roads, I think it's really beneficial. Asphalt patching, this is something that we've been maintaining internally the last couple of years. Before that, we did, uh, we went out to bid for, but, um, I think we're getting a little bit behind on our asphalt patching. And once that starts, uh, they can... on our asphalt patching, and once that starts, they can escalate pretty quickly. And then gravel, I think, I added some money in for the gravel, because I'd like to have the limestone gravel rather than what we're crushing in some of our pits on these higher-traffic roads, but it's a cost thing. Limestone costs 12 bucks a ton, and we're getting our crushed gravel for around seven. So it's really a cost savings to the county, but in the long run, I think limestone is a better product. But, so, that's how I came up with all the money to assign. Now, I'm going to restate, this is not spent money. This is assigned money. Some of these projects I would like to see go through, and some of them are requested in the budget cycle that I, we have to make sure we get through.
I would like to add to just what you just said. Again, these are assignments. These are not, this is not, doesn't even mean we're going to do these projects. We're just required by law to be under that 40%, 40% or under. The other thing I want to make very, very, very clear is to department heads, be working with your liaisons on this, because this does not give budget authority. So everything that comes off of this list, we will have to have a supplemental budget hearing on. We have to schedule those hearings. If it's something that you're needing, be working with your liaisons to get, so we can get this done, because this is, we'll have to supplement the budget out of assigned funds. So it's, again, it's not budgetary, budget authority on this. It's, we'll have to supplement budget.
I think Rich did an outstanding job on this. I, just to bring to your attention a couple of items that probably need to be done that wouldn't be feasible in a budget probably is the heating cooling system in the courthouse is, ever since I've been a commissioner, Kevin's been talking to me that that needs to be replaced, and that's an expensive item. And the only other thing I can think of is this building over here. I don't know what-
Yeah, so I do have the building on there for removal.
Oh, okay.
I put $300,000 in there. I took a swag at that number, to be honest, but-
It seems like I heard $250,000 at one time.
Seems like that's the rounder it was.
Yeah, so, okay, that is-
And I, I agree on the heating and cooling on the courthouse. I don't think I had that included, because the cooling tower is for the LEC.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just one out of four.
I mean, I, I don't know. I thought that Kevin told me it could be like a million dollars to-
I believe that was true.
To fix that, so, just something to think about moving forward.
I like, I think that's a great idea that you put that in there, and I like how we can dump it all into great big main categories of building, highway, whatever, and then adjust them. All that being said, I realize this is assignments and everything, but I completely agree with Rich, and that is, I think we need to get the switches ordered and done ASAP.
And we do have a quote on that as of yesterday at 11 something, so I will be pushing through that one as well.
So, yeah, just as I remind you, that's going to have to have a supplemental hearing.
Right, and, but-
So we'll have, we'll have to set that.
All that, all that being said, we're not meeting again until January 17th.
Yeah, so Ken, is it allowed to set a supplemental hearing for, can we set a supplemental hearing today for our first meeting in January? So, yeah, because it sounds like we need some switches soon for Tony.
What I'm saying is you're doing the assignments here, is the supplemental based on this assignment.
Yes.
Yeah, then I'm okay with it, because you're taking action based on something that's on the agenda specifically.
Okay, but we're going to have to set it-
Yeah, yeah, you're going to have to set your date.
It wouldn't have anything to do with what we're talking about now, but I just asked if we could get it done that soon.
Yeah, yeah, today you could make a motion to set a supplemental hearing for your January 14, 17, whatever it is meeting.
That was my question. Thank you.
And then my next question is, is are we going to have to wait a whole month before we can order anything? Because do we have any idea how long it's even going to take to get anything once it's ordered?
Tony Cummins, Meade County, IT. As far as I'm aware right now, this was very last minute, they got the quote to me yesterday morning. They're waiting on the go-ahead to get this ordered. I believe they have all the items in stock, so I'm hoping for potentially 10, 15 day turnaround.
Is this, is this the company down at the Old Gateway?
Down, down Palermo, yeah, RTI, yeah.
Because also, aren't you going into kind of, January's kind of a, more of a downtime for you over there? No?
Okay.
I mean, rather than August to have to-
Right, yeah, obviously, yes.
Install and do all this stuff?
Yes, yes.
Um, I-
My best guess is the hardware is on hand, just waiting for the go-ahead.
Okay, I think as soon as we can execute it, it needs to be done.
Any other questions, comments on? Rich, yeah, you did a great job on this.
Yeah.
Appreciate all the work you put into this. There, I think you have the-
So I did write up a motion.
Have it some action.
If everybody is okay with, if they-
There's no more question, comments, I'll ask for action.
And I appreciate the efforts from the department heads that I got on this as well.
Um, since we've got leeway on these assignments, are you going to, in your motion, tack on another million on the buildings that would cover the heating and cooling at the Erskine or any of the other buildings that might come up? I mean, just, I mean, with all the buildings we have, I can see where it wouldn't be hard to spend 2.2 million.
So, I think, I guess the way I would look at this is if, if those events come up, this is the requirement by the state to assign this money. If something comes up that's not in cycle, at that time, I think I would handle it.
Yeah, we can use it out of unassigned funds then as well, is how it would happen there.
Yeah, this is just the state requirement that-
Right, right, but I didn't know if this got us completely under it or not.
It does, yes.
Oh, okay.
13, 473, and some change.
Okay, okay. I couldn't remember the exact number.
Mr. Chair, I did provide our preliminary estimation of funds determination here. Whoops, let me get the right sheet. This is how we determined the number, the bottom line that you needed to assign.
Thank you. That's the number I was shooting for.
Let's pray it's correct.
Well, it is correct. I did overshoot just slightly. I don't doubt you at all, it is correct. You got some action? I do. I actually wrote up a motion, because this one was a long one, and I can give you the motion, so. My motion is to assign $13,475,000 from the general fund for the future needs within the departments of Meade County, and I broke those out into the different departments. Facilities, $1,210,000. Commission, $100,000 for professional services. Planning, $100,000 for professional services. Treasurer, $5,000. Sheriff, $70,000. Communications, $90,000. IT, $440,000. And Highway, $11,460,000.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it. He has it electronically.
I have a motion and a second on the motion. It's the same numbers that you're seeing here on the spreadsheet that you guys got that went into that motion, I assume.
Yes, that is correct. It's the same number.
Motion second to sign $13,475,000. Is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Brings us down to item J6, levy resolution. We passed this last week. It was due to the discrepancy. We had a number that was off from what the state showed us. The discrepancy came in budget time. We used the estimated growth numbers and we gave us the actual, so it allowed us to raise our secondary road tax from 364,000 to 368,000. What we didn't have last week was this resolution to bring the levy from .221 to .223. So I have any questions, comments on what we have on our agenda? And our action to pass this resolution, or deny it?
I'll make a motion to approve the corrected budget levy.
The corrected budget, yeah, levy, this, yeah, this resolution, yeah, okay. Motion second on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Mr. Chair, do you want to specify that it is for secondary road?
Uh, yes, I would, for secondary road, and that's the only thing that's changing within the resolution, so. Any more discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. It's down to commission, K1. Communicate, is there anything in Communicate I'd like to discuss? There's, I'd like to point out tomorrow, the historical site is going to do a little presentation in this room at 2 o'clock. Ed, do you remember? Rain, do you remember?
Yeah.
I believe it's at 2 o'clock, at 2 o'clock.
It is 2 PM, yeah.
Yep. And then they're going to be putting some items in the time capsule downstairs after that presentation, so if anyone would like to be up here and join us. Pennington County sent us letters. Is there anything in that that anyone would like to discuss?
And we asked the jail to bring cookies for the-
Yell cookies?
We're broke.
Okay, let's move on down to item K2. Session at this point on that.
Only, only thing I would say is that as part of the acquisition of property for the correction of the dangerous curves on Elk Creek, we, the council has made, our outside council has said that it would be appropriate to do an offer of compensation with the one party that they have not resolved, and thus I'm going to make a motion that we authorize our outside counsel, Jefford at Bangs McCullough, to offer to deposit $122,000 for it as part of acquiring.
I'll second. Is there any additional costs that we need to incorporate in that?
Well, yeah, the offer is 122,000 with costs. Costs are determined by any eligible recoverable costs in litigation, which at this point, there are none, because there are just, but there could be additional. There could be for like filing fees, deposition, transcript charges, and things like that. I'll still second, thank you.
A motion second on the floor. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Brings us to K3. Word of Truth Family Church. Last week, we had, we discussed and denied an abatement request. This is in regards to the penalties that have been accruing in the time that these taxes have not been paid. We do have a representative here, Mr. Randolph. If you'd like to come forward, I probably won't give you as much time today. If you want, just take a couple of minutes to just introduce yourself and what you're, what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Tony Randolph, Board of Director for Word of Truth Family Church. I wasn't, I didn't know if I was speaking on this at all today or addressing anything, but with, what we're talking about today is obviously the removal of the fees for the back taxes. And so I guess in the process of that, my ask is that you would just remove the fees. I don't know if you have any questions for me past that, but that's the ask.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph, for coming back today. Any questions, comments for Mr. Randolph and our action?
I thought we had discussed that last-
This is, this is the fees. This is strictly to do with the fees.
Yeah, I know that.
Nope, we, we made an attempt to waive the fees on this. It was given us, we had been advised by legal to, to not, that we, it was not specifically on the agenda for this reason, so he advised us not to do it at this time until it can get on the agenda. So we placed it on the agenda this time. Any questions, comments, and our action?
A move that we waive the fees.
A motion second to waive the fees for the, these, the fines, I guess, for the, yeah, the fines for the taxes that were not paid. Any discussion to that motion?
This Ted, when you say fees, are you talking the interest?
That'd be the fines, it'd be the interest. So, yeah, I was saying it wrong when I said fees. I apologize. That was my fault.
Yeah, so, okay, so the motion should be to waive the penalty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I concur.
Then I concur on the second on penalty.
Thank you for the, that's a good point, clarification. Any other discussion to that motion? And I was the one to bring this back. I do have, the only question I would have is, is these penalties wouldn't all be owed to the county. Some would have to go to school districts and so on and so forth, so I don't know how to, if it would be, it's going to create a paperwork nightmare, but, and I guess we're only dealing, we're not dealing with a lot of money either, but I don't know if we'd have to take that out, or if it would be just ours, penalties, or how we'd do that. I guess I'm just going to ask that question for point of clarification. I didn't, don't want to muddy the water, but I-
I think what they ought to do is just do the same percentage-wise, just across it.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is there a time limit on when the taxes would need to be paid?
I think that's a good point as well. I think, yeah, if the taxes aren't paid at a certain time, I think should be included within the motion.
When do you think the taxes can get paid?
We can't, we can't hear you, but-
Yes, that's a great question. That's something that we'd have to talk with the rest of the board as far as how we're going to deal with that, so understood.
We could decide to move the fees as of now. I mean, I guess would they start reoccurring in a month if they're, or if they're not, if they're not paid within a month or so, or, I mean, that'd be only fair to make that in the motion, I guess, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I would agree.
I don't want some confusion that if they decide never to pay them, that certainly you don't continue to do it for real.
They accrue the first of the month-
Right.
For the entire month. You could say waive penalties, or excuse me, interest and penalties through no later than last day of February. I mean, whatever date you wanted to choose, and that would encompass the timeframe.
Sure. Is that okay with you, Ted, you made the motion?
Yeah, I second. I think that's a very good point that we, I appreciate tying a date to it.
Yes, and that's, that's about the best we can do on that.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yep, yeah. So I have a motion second on the floor. Is there anything else we can clean up within that? Motion second on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Hmm?
Was there a date offered?
Yes, it'd be the end of February.
Did I miss it?
So if it's not paid by the end of February, the penalties and fees would go back on as well as just start reoccurring. Is that clear?
Yes, thank you.
Any more discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so motion carries. Let's go down to consent. We'd need to, I want to remove item L5 off of the consent calendar. Got any other thing, anything- Got any other thing, anything else needs to come off the consent calendar? Hearing none, can I get, take some action, or get some action on the approval of the consent calendar without item L5?
Under all items except by item 5.
Second. Motion is second on the floor to approve the consent calendar without item L5 on there. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll discuss L5 after, if we can get done quickly, we've got hungry people waiting for us, Ken, and you're holding on.
Including myself.[642.62][642.62](laughing) I asked that L5 be removed, had questions raised from some employees about remote access to sensitive data, either HIPAA or personnel information, if we're having a part-time HR person work from home. Deborah has talked about specific projects, if you want to fill that in, then Tony can tell you yes or no, as to what data can be accessed.
Since we have an executive session, can we discuss, and since we have a lot of people waiting here, can, can we adjourn and come back and discuss this?
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Let's just take a break for now, or you want to go and...
No, no, let's take the break, the only thing I'm going to say just for the record, I'm going to pass out a motion I've drafted on, they actually talked about this morning, so everybody has a copy of it, a review prior to me.
Well, let's break now, I anticipate probably close to an hour, but...
At least an hour.
I don't know, Ted might not come back.
Yeah.
But Ted's done. Let's just move him down to the chair. Yeah, New Underwood. Ted's last meeting, so we're having some lighters.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, you have a most great evening.
Eight years. You're certainly welcome joining us. They know all about this road.
Good looking.
New Underwood Road.
Yeah.
Auto traffic. So, um, you know what, it's a county road. Low road traffic. How do you start? But if we get data... Settle list. Secretary Johnson's done. And that conversation happening, but he doesn't want it. We are trying, we did try.
Assignments, we need to set a hearing.
Mr. Liggett, let's start. You have some things that you want to clean up here.
Yeah, so I guess it would be fall under IT or does it fall under the item J?
Either or would be fine, I think. But do you get it under the assignment stuff?
No IT on here today.
It'll go under the assignment.
So, under the general fund assignments, I'd like to make a motion to authorize IT to purchase the switch and the core switches for the county. Tony's got a quote on that and working on a little bit better price, but...
So you're authorizing him to...
To purchase, yes.
Yeah, I'll second that, but then I have a question.
Motion is second on the floor.
Does he have sufficient funds to pay for it this year?
Oh, it'll be out of next year's budget.
Okay.
Because we can't, this year's closed essentially.
Well, yeah, if he doesn't have funds.
We'll have to take, it's going to come out of the assignment.
Okay, which is fine. Then can we clarify the motion to pay for it out of his 2026 budget?
Oh, yes, out of the 2026 budget.
Yeah, I'd agree with that modification.
Okay, motion is second on the floor to allow the IT to order these switches and controls. Any more discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And on that same, the general fund assignment, I'll make a motion to set a supplemental budget hearing for the first meeting in January for, at 10 o'clock, for the 2025 assignments.
January 14th?
That hasn't been scheduled, but that would, it is, yeah.
January 14th.
We're going to have to schedule it now.
Schedule it now.
January 14th at 10 o'clock.
Because we have to have a meeting to decide whether we're going to meet on them.
I understand. So we're scheduling that. Yeah, that was on my mind. We'll schedule our meeting for January 14th.
Our first meeting of the year.
I don't have a second. Are you, did you second it?
I'll second that.
I have motion and second on the floor to set a supplemental budget hearing out of assigned funds for the January 14th meeting. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carried. So yes, we will schedule, do we need to, do we need to take action to schedule our first meeting? I don't think so, but we just declare it. And I think we wanted to visit with you about that, so let's just off on that. So yeah, first meeting will be January 14th. Commissioner Wazorek, let's go back to PTO and item C1 and 2.
Okay. Everybody might recall, I've made a couple motion under C1 already, and that was to approve the PTO policy and also then to acknowledge that accrued vacation would transfer to PTO time. I'm going to make a third motion, and it's got some length to it, so if everybody will bear with me. And then Ray, as soon as I complete the motion, I'll email it to you, so you've got it in an electronic format. You have a hard copy sitting next to you right now.
It finished this off.
I hand it out before... No, no. No, if you want me to, I can make another one.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just work on this one.
Lawyers get paid by the word, so I've just been trained that way.
He gets paid different than us?
Yeah, yeah, I wish. All right, so I'm just going to make a motion that with the adoption of the county's paid time off policy, that each employee's sick leave be addressed as follows. Employees that have been with the county for at least the last six years, they have the following options. Options, excuse me. Sorry. That the employee may carry over for sick leave that person's accrued sick leave, but not to exceed 140 hours. Due of rolling over the sick leave, the employee may, if they so elect, by noon on January 10th, 2025, with the personnel office. One, take pay for accrued sick leave up to 240 hours at 11:50. Eight hours.
And speak in your mic a little more, would you, Commissioner?
Yeah, probably. At 11:50, or if less than 240 hours are accrued by that employee, the employee's entire, the entire sick leave, and no sick leave carryover. Or two, if the employee has at least 240 hours accrued, take pay for the, for accrued sick leave 120 hours at 11:50 and carry over 120 hours of sick leave. Or if less than 240 hours are accrued by that employee, one half the employee's accrued sick leave, and that employee be allowed to carry over the other half of that sick leave. That the carryover sick leave will be subject to reducing maximum carryover each year by 60 hours, so that on January 1, 2026, the employee may have, only have 180 hours of sick leave. January 1, 2027, 120 hours of sick leave. January 1, 2028, 60 hours of sick leave, and then no sick leave on January 1st, 2029. For employees that have been with the county less than six years, they have the following sick leave carryover. Employees may carry over that person's accrued sick leave not to exceed 160 hours. That the carryover sick leave will be subject to reducing maximum carryover each year by 40 hours, so that on January 1, 2026, the employee may only have 120 hours of sick leave. January 1, 2027, 80 hours of sick leave. January 1, 2028, 40 hours of sick leave, and then no sick leave on January 1, 2029. For all employees, all sick leave accrued, not carried over or paid out, be terminated effective January 20th, 2025. For all employees, any carried over sick leave will not be eligible for payout on the employee leaving employment with the county for any reason. All payouts under this motion shall be made the first pay period in March 2025. That is my motion.
Motion is second on the floor. Is there discussion to the motion?
Your mic.
I really hate to add anything to something two attorneys wrote, but I wonder if for clarification purposes, when we say with the adoption of the county's, we put the date in there. So we establish the date in which this happens, so that... That's clear. Because everything goes back to that, but it doesn't specify the specific date of that PTO. That's just a question I have.
I can see your point, but I think it's handled because the PTO, this is all supposed to take effect when the PTO starts.
Yeah.
Therefore, it would be the January 20th, 2025.
Use your mic.
I think it's merely a declaration of the triggering event, not, that date isn't important to this resolution.
We are adopting the PTO today, but it does not become effective until January 20th. So, that's why I'm saying that. So is the date effective on the day we adopt it, or the date it becomes effective? Because you can also be accruing or spending or using up time between now and January 20th. So that's why I'm asking the question, because we don't specify if it's, when it's adopted in past, which is today, or when it becomes effective.
So add, could we add to your motion, Commissioner Wazorek, with this, with this clear it up? With the adoption of the county's paid time off policy on January 20th, 2025, first sentence, would that clear that up?
I would say, the better way to say it would be with an effective date of January 20th, 2020.
Okay, but right at that where I mentioned, okay. That, that address your concern?
Yeah, I hate to be a stickler, but I just thought...
This is important, we got to get it right. Would that address your concern?
Mm-hmm, because I mean, that's a month away, that's a little bit more than a month away.
Hey, any more discussion, questions, concerns on this motion?
And we have carryover written both as two words and one.
Well, yeah, it's interesting.
We need to be concise or consistent.
If you would have just said it all, you wouldn't have seen that.
Yeah.
I do too.
Any more questions, discussions on this motion?
Except if you're mentioning it as a carryover, as being a verb versus a noun, there are places here where it should be two words and then one, some places is one, but with that I shall shut up.
Any more questions, discussion on this motion? Any more questions, discussion on this motion? And it's, I guess, I'll just ask, it's, because it's specifically saying sick leave, so therefore it is, is, it only needs to be used for that purpose.
The only discussion I'd have with that is, I think probably in the past that there's gonna be some people that are gonna follow that and just use it for sick leave, and other people are gonna just use it for what they want. So it's gonna become way more of a benefit for those that just use it how they want than for those that use it for sick leave. So, I don't know, you know, we have, what, ten different department heads that are gonna be, that are gonna be, uh, managing this. And so, I'm not, I'm not certain that it's gonna be the same benefit all the way across for different employees, depending on what they're... So, I mean, and I know you, you know, we don't have a perfect world, or...
Well, we can't, and we can't force people to be honest, I guess.
Yeah, so...
And, and today, we don't know if they're taking it for sick leave, or...
Well...
Or the dog.
I mean, we just made it all PTO, then, then the ones that use it don't have to lie, or...
Yeah, it can't be, because they...
No, it can't be.
What? Oh, it has to be called sick leave.
Wow, and then...
Okay, so basically, that's our only option, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have to call it sick leave, because that's all we've heard from the employees is sick leave. It has been sick leave, sick leave, sick leave, sick, sick leave, so...
Yeah, I don't care what we call it, I just, you know, I'd like to see it all.
No, but apparently their employees do.
I, I think it should all be administrated the same way, but...
Are you, I guess, yeah, right now, it's in the motion as sick leave.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, unless you wanna make an amendment, Commissioner, uh, Eamon.
No, it sounds like it needs to be called sick leave, so...
Okay, um, any more discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I, to echo a comment, Ted, I mean, some people are gonna, some people abuse stuff. Um, it's maddening, but we do have a set of policies for how sick leave is supposed to be handled. That should act as a guide, whether, whether a manager allows some people use it in ways in violation of the policy, I think we're gonna have to deal with on a case-by-case basis, but, but, uh, uh, but I, that's one of the reasons to get to the PTO, and this is a transition time, so nobody falls between the cracks on the transition.
Any more discussion to the motion? Um, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Ray, I re-sent you that. Um, I made, I added the amendment we did on what I previously, so I just resend it to you in a, in a email, so you have it electronically.
Uh, brings us down to exec session, executive session. Motion going to exec. We got in today.
Legal and personnel.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel. Careful second. Motion second on the floor to go into lea- into executive session for legal and personnel. Uh, any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh...
Yeah, the computer's gonna stay right here, and I think Tony's gonna put it in the trash.
Okay, if I-- the auditor would kindly take two minutes? Uh, let's go to L5. Yes, we did. Ready? Item L5, dealing with HR remote project work. Uh, anybody want to have anything to say, add, or action on that?
I'll make a motion to recommend using, uh, continue using Tina to help with HR until we find some--
I'll second.
Motion of second on the floor to continue using Tina for remote HR work. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Think we need to go back to, like, we-- planning board interviews. We had four people interviewed today. Does, uh, anybody want to make any nominations?
I- I- I'll start with one. I nominate Mike Charnholm for, uh, I will make the motion to appoint Mike Charnholm for another three-year term on the MEED Planning Commission.
I'll second.
The nomination, I've always wanted, nominations don't need a motion of second. They just, someone can just nominate, is that--
Yeah, except I think I appointed, I think I made the wrong word saying nominate.
So you just say you nominate, so any commissioner can nominate, I would assume, and then it, because you'd have to vote on each mo-- on a motion.
Okay.
I think this would be a motion.
Alright.
Uh, Mike Charnholm has been nominated. Is anybody else nominated? We have three positions to fill.
I'll nominate, um, Mike Pauling. Michael Paul.
Um, let's see. I'll--
I'll also nominate Nancy Verres.
Three people nominated. Other nominations? Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll declare a nomination cease. Uh, we have three people nominated, uh, for the planning board. Um, uh, there's three positions. Uh, could it, I would need action then to appoint these people. Motion of second to appoint these people.
I'll ma-- I'll make a motion to appoint the nominated, um, individuals for the three-year term for planning.
Motion of second on the floor to appoint, uh, Mike Charnholm, Mike Pauling, and Nancy Verres to the planning board. Uh, is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. We have completed our agenda and I don't see any more work that's yet to be undone. Uh, so I declare us adjourned and want to thank the board for this year. We've had a good year. And Ted for eight years.
Thank you.
Well, thank all of you for the pitch your wonderful party and the privilege of working with you.
We're gonna really miss--
Been, been quite a ride.
We are for sure. I declare us adjourned.
And you still got two weeks left, Ed.